Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 12th Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight is also the first night of Hanukkah, Jewish Festival of Lights, which will run through Wednesday, December 20th. For those who are paying attention, it's 13 days till Christmas and 20 days till we welcome in 2018. It's hard to believe 2017 has flown by. Tonight, we'll be focused on our budget. We'll be talking through, after our liaison comments, we'll discuss a budget review of public services, administrative services, and finance, followed by a bond anticipation notes, debt authorization at about nine o'clock. We'll close with approval of minutes. Given it's a full evening, if you guys could keep your liaison comments brief, that would be helpful. Barry, I know you're banished to the kids' table way at the end.
Yeah, well, yeah, so actually, a number of things all need to be talked about, but I'll try to say them quickly. I attended the Red and H-Rac sponsored talk with Anna Hornstein, it seems like, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, and it's actually appropriate on the first night of Hanukkah. She once again gave a tremendous talk about preserving democracy in ways that we can respond to some of the hate speech and graffiti around here. And for me, the biggest takeaway, now Andrew, you were there, so were you, John, or you, the biggest takeaway, I walked out of there was with, when she said that you can never make the unacceptable acceptable. As soon as you do that, you open up the door for things that you never could imagine happening. So I think a really great lesson in these times, and the place was packed, and I'm really excited to have been a part of that. Also, quickly, I attended last night the CPDC meeting where the Sunoco Station project was actually unveiled for the first time. Thirty units with some commercial slash retail to be determined. That's a project that will come before us for a couple of things. One is that they're requesting two to three parking spots on Main Street, which comes under our purview, as well as the fact that the driveway to access the project will be on Green Street, and it's less than 50 feet away from the Main Street in the section, which will also require selectmen approval. There's some really great things about the project, you know, some interesting, you know, the committee had some interesting comments. I think the biggest challenge is going to be traffic and parking, as usual. There aren't any dedicated spaces for the retail, so, you know, potentially talk of maybe knocking down a couple of the units to make more parking for the retail, to make that work, and then also some of the traffic concerns of getting in and out of there, given the Main Street traffic. But overall, it looked like a good development team, you know, they put some pretty nice concepts together, and that was just the first hearing, so more to come on that. Also, what I wanted just to sort of put really quickly before the board, I don't know if it requires a formal motion or not, you know, I kind of, like everybody else, really read the comments on our survey and really thought about, you know, what are some of the things that we as, you know, on the select board can do to kind of not only build trust, but accessibility and accountability? And one thing that I thought of that would be really easy to implement and also move in that right direction is the fact that we hold office hours once a month, which essentially means that each one of us does it twice a year. I don't think it'd be necessarily a bad idea if we held office hours, maybe starting in January, before every meeting. This way, we're more accountable, we're more accessible, people will know that before any select board meeting that they can actually come and access one of the members to talk about anything that they want. So, again, it's not anything formal, but I just want to sort of put that out there as something to think about, noodle on, and hopefully, you know, really easy to implement. So, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Barry. And for those watching at home, we're suffering from a lack of electricity, which is why the order of the seating up here is a little different than usual. Andy?
Just trying to keep you all awake. So, I, the Town Forest Committee had a meeting that I was unable to attend, but they are in the process of having a forest consultant come through the Town Forest and look at, you know, what sort of sick trees might need to be removed for the health of the forest, and so stay tuned to that. The public will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in on that. Like Barry, I went to Dr. Hornstein's talk, found it very, she's a very positive person, given all she's gone through, and I think the take-home for me was similar to what Barry said. She, you know, she said, "Don't normalize what is, what shouldn't be normal." So, I thought that was a pretty good message. And I think that's, and I agree with Barry, I think having office hours every time we meet, at least for the, during the budget discussions and after that, is a good, is a good idea. I'd be willing to do it.
Mechanically, it might be easiest if the same individual for that month just did it both months, or if there happen to be three meetings, and then December's going to be a little interesting with all the budget meetings.
Yeah, true. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Dan?
I'll be brief, no report.
John?
No, I'm clear.
Bob, any comments?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? Huge. Sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but we're face, all facing the wrong way.
Good evening. I think myself, the fire chief, would like to thank Austin Prepp and Dr. James Hickey they had last Friday morning, a blue mask to honor first responders of the town of Reading and also of parents of Austin Prepp's students. So again, I'd just like to publicly thank Austin Prepp.
I as well like to thank the students of Austin Prepp and Dr. Hickey and the staff. They did a wonderful job with it. It was, it was a nice event for, you know, the firefighters and the police officers and the first responders even there. Just want to publicly say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any other public comment? Okay. Bob?
Finance committee, do it.
Yes, please. Great. Bob?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Does everyone hear me okay? If you can't hear during the meeting, just raise your hand or yell or something. I'm going to give a brief, just a few-minute introduction before the three folks on my right speak. The budget process is a little bit different this year, and I'll describe how and why. The finance committee specifically, and some in the community, asked that we start earlier this year and make it more of a public process, if you will, early on. So we're here one month earlier than we normally would. Normally, the selectmen meet and review budgets in January. And to make an important distinction, in January, they would review the town manager's budget, which must be balanced. What you will hear tonight is the department heads' requested budgets, which do not need to be balanced. This is a discussion that department heads and myself and my predecessor have every November, December, so we're just inviting you into that section of the discussion, I guess is the best way to put it. We're also asked to spend a little bit more time discussing past cuts and the idea of level services. And Dr. Doherty and I have spent a lot of time, including breakfast this morning, discussing that concept. And so you'll see from the town over the next two weeks, a little bit more of a similar style to what the school department has historically done. I was also asked to encourage slash allow department heads to speak more freely. That's an interesting comment. So again, the results below, I mentioned the selectmen. As you'll see at the end of my remarks, the requested budgets speak for themselves in terms of level services and past cuts. And I do want to address the last comment, that with the possible exception of a brief discussion I had with the police chief or his predecessor about not discussing staffing levels overnight, I have never discouraged department heads from speaking about anything in their operation, and those that know me know I wouldn't. But I have encouraged them to speak a little more freely this year. And because you will hear from them about budgets they asked for, perhaps the tenor will be a little different instead of what the mean old town manager let us have, you'll hear from them a little bit more honestly, I guess, what it is they really need. I will say that culturally, all the department heads, present and past, have just been very reluctant to spend money and to hope for something that's not realistic. There's really not a lot of sense in getting all worked out about a budget you'd like to have when you know you can't have it. So some of the difficulty, I guess I'll say, in not discussing cuts and level services is, as a practical matter, all the town department heads knew it wasn't possible, so they just didn't complain about it, and they just moved on and did the best they can. I've said it in the past, it deserves being said again, because there's always new in the audience. You might find a better town manager and department heads individually in the Commonwealth, you will not find a better team. The department heads work together as a team as well as any other, I'm sure, in the Commonwealth. What I asked the departments to do a month or two ago was to, again, it's more of an art than a science, but create budgets to approximate service levels from some point in the recent past. I've put down five years, it's not a mathematical exercise. This is the discussion we have, again, perhaps a little more off-camera every year, and it's been done every year for many years. But again, in public, normally, the selectmen and the public are not brought in until, you know, the town manager has swung the proverbial, they ask to balance the budgets. So there has been discussion in the past about what was not in the budget, but I think tonight, by not seeing the balanced budget, you'll then get a much stronger sense of how difficult it is to balance those budgets. And this will shift our focus to one, to an approach the schools have used historically. Neither is honestly right or wrong, but it's just now that we're more comparable. When you looked at the town budget in the past, we always focused in on how many more or less FTEs employees do you have and why. The schools, as you'll notice, almost never talk about FTEs. They talk about level service, meaning a classroom size, for instance, and meeting some other mandates that they have. So the schools will say, "I need to cut three teachers," and will readily admit, "That's from adding five teachers that I need in order to preserve service levels. So in fact, I'm adding two teachers, but I'm really cutting three." And that's semantics to some degree, but what you'll hear from the town tonight is the addition of those five teachers and why it's so important in our departments. The selectmen will have the experts presenting the budgets to them. They should feel free to ask as many questions as you can think of. If department heads don't have answers tonight, they'll certainly get back to you on those. If you think of questions later, that's fine, just send them right along to myself and/or a department head, we're glad to get you the answers. To the extent that some of the questions might be complex, we might not get you the answer, for instance, by tomorrow night, but at some point during this budget process, you'll certainly see it. On the last night of the budget presentations, December 20th, I'll describe what approach I will take to balance the budgets against the funds available. Also, as a response to one of Barry's comments, I too only recently read the comments from the selectmen survey. Superintendent and I commiserated about that. What I did a half an hour after I read them all at once was send myself an email about things I thought I should address, and if you will, to dispel some myths that are out there. And I don't mean to overplay the fact that one comment that may not be fully accurate deserves, you know, a great deal of our attention, but I will try to dispel what I think of some more commonly-held budget myths out there about how the town is operated. Lastly, I will not present detailed balanced budgets until January. That's the normal process. This discussion is public a month earlier, as FinCom desired. As you can imagine, I already have a balanced budget, at least in my head, or if not, in my laptop, but I really do want this process to play out in public, to hear back from the public, especially from the board, as to what its priorities are. I can then adjust what I have done. I will tell you, it is relatively simple to balance the budget if you think all the new things are not worth having. It is much more complex when you listen to all the department heads as to why they need new things, in order to then say, "Let's pretend we have all these, not eliminate them away." That is a very, very difficult exercise. So here are the budgets that are requested that are in front of you. The first three we'll present tonight, public services, administrative service, and finance. You'll see 16, 8, and 7 percent increases. Tomorrow night, you'll see the public library and public safety, four budgets out of public safety, four, six, and 11.6 percent increases. The third night, you'll see facilities with a very modest 1 percent increase, and if you will recall, and we'll certainly remind you, last year, we put a lot of one-time money in Joe's budget last year, which now comes out this year, which is why even though he may request things, his increase is small. That night also, Dr. Doherty will join us to describe the current update on the Killam School and the situation there, as well as the capital projects down in and around the high schools, the shared fields and so forth. On the last night, we'll do public works, we'll also include the enterprise funds, and you can see that. So you can see, you know, there's an 8 percent increase, obviously, we don't have 8 percent worth of funds. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jean and let her begin with public services, which leads the way in a plus 16 percent request.
Actually, Mr. Chair, can I just make a brief comment? This is actually, actually refreshing. I probably now read in my Reading public service career, probably 19 budgets, and this is the first one that I got where, basically, I feel like I have a little bit of input into, because in the past, the town, you guys would have the discussion, probably a full-throated discussion, it might not have always been pleasant, about what we really need to run the town, what are the things we should be doing, and essentially, you guys fought that out in private, and the town manager would present a balanced budget, and essentially, whether you were on FinCom or on the select board or any other thing, you would say, "Okay, here it is." All the stuff got done. So no one ever heard about the things that we're not doing. No one ever heard about the things that we're continuing to do, even though we don't have the staff to do them. So all of that stuff, it was sort of like, okay, it's almost, not a take it or leave it, because that's not really fair, because we do put some things in, but basically, what we think is important, and the true cost of really running the town and providing a high level of municipal services in the 21st century, got swept under the rug. We never discussed the true cost of running the enterprise. You guys would do that, figure out we can't afford it, and put forward the things you thought, we tinkered around, and then there it goes. I'm actually really looking forward to all of this stuff, because I really want to hear Jean, you know, and everybody else, some of the things that maybe you would like to do, but, you know, never felt like you could raise your hand and say. And then it's all up to us, and FinCom, and the community, to decide if those things are really going to be important. So I actually think this is a tremendous process. It's like a whiteboard, right? All the work, it's not been done, it's going to get done. And then we can make the decisions about how much money we have, and what will get done within that, and then if we ask the community to go and dig in their pockets a little bit more, some of the things that we could add back in after we've discussed it as a group and as a community. So I think this is a great way to start, and maybe it's the way we go forward every time, whether or not we have an override or not. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Barry. And just to amplify that slightly, one of the prevailing comments in the survey, in the collection of comments taken under the survey, was that the public felt that the board in particular, and to some extent, the town agencies, did not have an adequate and full-throated explanation of their budgets, the budget process, the deficits. The concept of the communication wasn't good enough, the communication wasn't thorough enough, the communication wasn't understood, was repeated with some regularity in the comments. Part of the reason we're starting tonight a month early is to provide people with that additional time, that soak time to understand the material, be able to raise questions. So if you're watching tonight, by all means, ask questions, and if your friends and others that might be interested have a question, please get, please pass the word. We can only broadcast it, there's really no other effective way other than putting it in the newspaper or putting it over RCTV. Any other comments before we move on?
Yeah, I, I'm glad we're doing it this way. I agree with what Barry is saying relative to the information, because it's valuable. But I think we can't lose sight of the fact that this budget is very different from the school department's budget, for example. That is a budget that is managed and voted on and embraced directly by the school committee. By comparison, this is a budget that calls for our input, not for our vote. This, am I right about this, Bob, that, you know, effectively, this is, you know, from the purest standpoint of how it gets done? And I think that's, that is important for the audience, both here and at home, to understand that our role in this budget is advisory, and I think that's fair to say. But this approach of seeing it all out on the table to create dialogue, I think, has been...
Yeah, I agree with all your comments. The biggest difference, and certainly a takeaway I got in the last year, is what you'll see in the next two weeks is far superior than three or four or five pages of summary in the town meeting booklet, which described all this, very, in a very vanilla way. Here's all the things we didn't do. It was just stuff on a piece of paper. You'll see now how real it is.
John?
So this is the, my first time to this particular dance, and I'll have probably more questions than the other guys, mostly out of ignorant, my own ignorance, but a general question I had, Bob, is how do these sheets ultimately dovetail with the more comprehensive sheets that you presented at the FinCom meeting here a month ago, maybe, where sort of the bigger picture is viewed, all of our revenues, you know, basically all of our income versus all of our spending, and where this is just, how will this ultimately dovetail into that more broader spreadsheet?
Both, as we sit here, both the schools and the town know collectively how much money they have to spend. And that's derived from everything you just discussed.
Yes.
The 8 percent budget is clearly well more than what we have to spend. What you'll see in the town meeting booklet and the process is the more comprehensive view, but once that's discussed at the financial forums, that's not re-presented, if you will, until, again, town meeting. FinCom has seen it, they understand it. We could go over it again, certainly, but there's generally a historical lack of a need for that.
Okay.
So you'll see it all tied together, honestly, the most comprehensively will be at per-town meeting.
Okay. So we're not going to see accommodated costs associated with any of this?
You'll hear them discussed, but you won't see them in the FinCom format, I guess, is for me.
Okay, I get it. Thanks. Jean?
Okay, thank you.
You may want to pull the mic up there.
All right, how's that? Okay. Going first has its challenges. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jean Delius. For people who don't know who I am, I am the department head for the Public Services Department, and I'm going to walk you through the budget that was created when the town manager said, "Put down what you think is level service. Create what you think you need to run your department." And I found that to be a message that we hear repeatedly, but to the town manager's point, we know that times are constrained. Revenue is a challenge, and expenses are out of control, especially in the areas that we all know about, health insurance and whatnot. So I will take the blame for not asking in the past, because I realize, I've been doing this a very, very long time, I realize that there are other important considerations. So I present this budget to you, not out of arrogance and disrespect, I present it to you as an honest appraisal, all else being equal, of what I could do with a budget that was funded to this level. It's not meant to offend anyone or seem like we're really grabbing for money. We're not. This is just an honest portrayal.
I'm sorry, so Jean, when you go through that, when you, when you do that, will you say, "Okay, this is what we're already doing," and highlight the things that we could, so kind of break those out between, because I don't think a lot of people really know all the stuff we do. Some people assume we do everything.
Yeah.
So, some people assume we do nothing.
Yeah. I'll try and hit the high points, but we can certainly come back if there are things that we need to circle back to. So this is the slide that I like to show, because it reminds me of a juggling act, and that really is what we do with our boards, committees, and commissions. We have, I think, one of the highest number of volunteer boards of all the departments, and we, we are all the better for our volunteers, and I work very closely with most of these boards, and I go to most of these meetings. And it's, it's what we do. So I thought this was an important portrayal, because it shows you, and the acronyms probably mean nothing to 90 percent of the people looking at this, so I'll take a minute and I'll walk you through what are these volunteer boards. The one at the top is the Community Planning and Development Commission, that's our planning board. And the planning board is tasked with reviewing large development projects and for creating zoning, writing zoning. The master plan comes under the planning board, the housing plan comes under the planning board, and so many other planning-related documents that we spend a lot of time and a lot of public meetings talking about. That's a lot for a group of five volunteers. So staff time, and you'll see it in the slide, staff time is tremendous for the, not just going to the meetings, as you all, I think everyone in this room knows, it's not just about coming to the meeting and showing a PowerPoint and talking about the issue. It's preparing for the meeting. It's the follow-up after the meeting. It's all the legal work that has to be done to make sure those decisions are filed with the town clerk. It's getting with the applicants. We had a contractor in the office this morning at seven o'clock. He wanted a copy of his subdivision plan that the planning board approved last night at 10 o'clock. This is how we work. And by the way, he got it. So that's the planning board, CPDC, for those of you who want to do acronyms. The next one is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and you'll see, that's another tremendous amount of staff time for the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a great board, because they are looking at regulatory things. So I like the Zoning Board of Appeals, because it either is something they can fit within the context of mass general law, or they can't. And the only thing that is a little bit different for the Zoning Board of Appeals are these 40Bs that we keep bantering about. And the 40Bs, for anyone who hasn't heard me rant on and on about them, these are the projects that can be built without having to conform to local zoning, and it's a state law that allows that. We have no say. So the Zoning Board of Appeals gets the honor of going through all of those projects that everyone in the room is mad about, and that's quite a, that's quite a thing to be a part of, and I've been in a lot of them. So if you're ever having a tough night going to sleep, put on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and you'll be glad you weren't there. The next one is the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, they are a group that deals with wetland regulations, and we have both a state wetland act and a local bylaw. And they're, we have two for a reason. There's a little more flexibility with the local, which is kind of nice, but they go in and they review these elaborate plans for people who want to do things in areas that were never meant to have construction on them, and they figure out ways to do it. So that's an amazing group. The Historical Commission is different from the Historic District Commission, right, Virginia? And these folks do all kinds of things related to, the Historical Commission is looking at all kinds of things that are involved with the town. Historic District is more looking at the actual district and regulating from that point of view. The Board of Health, I've been very involved in the Board of Health for the past seven or eight months. I go to every Board of Health meeting. I know more about ticks and flu viruses than I ever thought I would, and I'm very proud of the work that the Board of Health does and the team staff that works with the Board of Health. We're lucky that when you go out to eat in Reading, we have a very diligent team that's out there making sure these restaurants are being looked at and inspected, and that makes me feel very good. But public health is a huge area that we can... But public health is a huge area that we can always do more in. We had the TIC presentation here and it was very well attended. I never saw so many people interested in TICs. It was a packed house. So you can only imagine the things that we could continue to do from an education point of view on public health. Council on Aging is one of our larger boards and they do a lot with our seniors and how can we better serve them and how can we meet their needs with, I think just last night they agreed to help out with some equipment that's needed for the computer center and so they really jump into, to basically be, fill the gap of what we can provide in the budget. And then we have the Recreation Committee and you'll see the slides on all the activities that we do in this town. It's tremendous. And I added one this year called Miscellaneous Working Groups because we've kind of snuck another ball in the air. We call it working groups. The working groups, we meet and we talk about zoning. We talk about, we have one that we're doing, wayfinding. Anybody know what wayfinding is? This is a whole, this is a whole signage and branding exercise that we're going through with an urban designer through a grant. So we get these sneaky little working groups going because we don't want to make a big fuss about having another board, but we need a group of people to get together and start to generate some ideas. So that's, that's sort of what we do outside of the regular town hall hours. I got very colorful with this one. Now I have to remember my colors. So this is the Public Services Department budget as presented tonight. This is not how we are in real life. Of course, I'm the town, Assistant Town Manager, Department Head. I have a Community Development Director who has the night off tonight because she covered the meeting last night. We split them up. She's also the Assistant Department Head and we're blues. I threw a purple in, which is the Community Services Director, and that's the position that we lost. So I'm going to say a couple of times in my presentation that this budget is about restoring previous cuts. This position was cut about a year and a half, two years ago because the person who was in that job got a great opportunity to go run the Y here in Reading. And he was a terrific help to me, a terrific part of the team, very involved in recreation. We actually have him in, have this position listed under recreation still in his memory. So that clearly is a big ask. I thought putting it in purple maybe was a good color to choose for that. I know right up front it's a big ask. We'll go into a little bit more about why I think we need it and what I think we can do with it, to Barry's point, but it sits up there, big and bold. Moving along, you can see all the divisions. We'll start with the Building Division. The Building Inspector is Mov. The reason he's Mov is because we're talking about adding to the existing capacity. We're talking about adding a full-time building inspector. Keeping what we have, but adding a full-timer. The rest of it's pretty self-explanatory. There's a code enforcement position that was also lost to budget cuts a few years ago. It's a very small number, but that's why it's in purple. Everything else is pretty much status quo on building. Moving on to planning, the Permits Coordinator, that I'll say a lot of wonderful things about tonight, she is the glue that holds it all together. She's the expediter. She's the runner. She's the person that knows where everything is. She's the person that runs to the counter when that guy needs his subdivision plan from the meeting that only ended six hours previously. She's amazing and we'd be sunk without her. So Permits Coordinator, that position's only been there for a year and that's how we're able to do what we do because of her. We have an asterisk position below that, which is the Regional Housing Services Coordinator. That is the Metro North Regional Housing Services Office, which is something that we put together based on a grant, looking at getting together with our community partners from the other communities and there's four towns that share a staff person, but more importantly, we get together and not only have the staff person track all the affordable housing, make sure we don't lose it, stay ahead of it, but anytime a unit becomes available for sale, we now have a coordinated way to get that unit filled with an affordable household.
Jean, who does that person work for?
She works for me. She's in Reading Town Hall.
We share her expense among three other communities?
Yes.
So that, that's one of our employees?
Yes.
And then we bill her services?
We bill and they pay.
Good.
We probably get a little bit more out of it because she sits in our office. But we do keep track of it and our partners are, we're very transparent about how it all gets divided up. Everybody's just so grateful that we have a person that can worry about this stuff and make sure that when a project gets approved, and we now have to go beg the state to please add the units to the subsidized housing inventory, this incredible document that, you know, no one could ever figure out how they, they track these things, but to get the units on there is not easy. And we have a dedicated person doing it for the four communities and that's, and she takes that whole piece and makes it happen. So it's a huge benefit. The next purple, which is-
Jean, I'm sorry, if I could just, before you get too far ahead, I'm just looking at the spreadsheets that Bob sent out for the various, I think, positions up there that match down here. And I'm trying to understand, we have currently, inspection, Building Inspector is listed here.
Yep.
And that is currently one person?
No.
It's currently two people?
No.
It's currently one and a half?
Well, can you hold the thought because I'm going to go into some more slides that will kind of dice up where we're at.
Okay.
We have, right now, we have a staffing level where we have two part-time building inspectors that were both the building inspectors in their communities. One was in Reading for many years, retired, came back half-time. Another one was in Pevydy, retired, came back, worked for us half-time. And then I have another building inspector that worked for many years for Woburn. He works for us eight hours a week. So it's kind of like 19, 19, and eight.
Okay.
And that's all lumped together under Building Inspector.
Right, 19, 19, and eight.
And eight, yeah.
I'll do the math.
Thank you. Okay, moving, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Did anyone else have any questions?
Go on, Jean.
I'm sorry, Jean. Can you talk about the Staff Planner, why that position's purple and what the need is that's causing you to put it in there?
So the purple Staff Planner is a need. We had a Staff Planner for many years and that position was, I guess you could say eliminated, but maybe morphed into the Community Development Director.
Could you define their function?
Sure.
Yeah.
The Staff Planner is the person that works with the Building Inspector at the counter to process the applications for the Zoning Board, for the Planning Board, dealing with issues like the smaller things like signs. Right now, the people who do that work are mostly Julie, the Community Development Director. She's doing that in addition to helping me run the department. And if Julie's not around, I run out and do the counter. So that's fine. I don't think that's the best way to organize the department. We can do that.
Well, it's not, you know, when we think about your value and we think about, you know, what the cost of having you do that at the counter is somewhat counterproductive, not somewhat, it's ridiculous actually, just not to think about it.
From a management point of view, it's probably not the best way to do it.
Right.
But sometimes we do what we got to do and if that's where it ends up, that's where it ends up. But there are some other opportunities that the Staff Planner can really provide us with, going after more grants, doing some more of the planning work, the long-range planning work, like dealing with the parking. We talked about that a lot under Economic Development. There's a lot of work to be done in planning and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next few slides, but the Staff Planner would offload work that is currently being done by myself and the Assistant Department Head in a way that I think makes a lot more sense.
Also, to the work that, I know we had more on a contract basis, but the whole Economic Development Study that was done sort of on a contract basis really sort of set the tone for our whole economic development plan and put it in context and there's no way you or Julie would have done that while you're writing comprehensive permits and stamping documents and all that. So that long-range stuff, which kind of laid the groundwork for some of the economic development activity that we have.
Yeah.
I could see that, you know, being a role.
Definitely.
And that was important, but that was just off-book. That wasn't something that we had. So Jean, I've read about half of the override survey comments and there's a theme of interest in how we, how the money is, how we spend our money and how that matches this. So will there be an opportunity for us to sort of line up these positions with the salaries that are listed in the sheets that were sent out? Because it's, it's helpful to know, I think, for me and for the public, what, for example, the Building Inspector is listed as this year, not the Building Inspectors that you just explained, are listed at about a salary of $120,650. But I understand now that that $120 grant is split over 40, covers 46 hours. So Bob, forgive me, is an FTE in town, 37 and a half hours a week or is it a 40-hour a week?
It's 37 and a half. And as you go through the budgets, you'll especially see in some departments that have, I'll say, great depth in positions.
Yeah.
Budgeting is always done at the position level.
Right.
So this happens to be one and a fraction FTE, Building Inspectors, going to two and a fraction.
Yeah.
You know, you'll see police and fire especially have tremendous depth with several FTEs in the line.
Good, good.
But the chart here should match up pretty well to the budget document in front of you. Sometimes it's a little hard to read because the budget document, for instance, the Staff Planner, the English is on one page and then it continues on the second.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, that's a little tricky. Okay, moving on, the Economic Development is something that I know this board was very involved in. Certainly, I was shocked when the conversation came up, we should hire someone, and we did hire someone and it was, I think, a great hire. We'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about that. I'm going to go through, I am going to go through the budget line by line and pull out the salient pieces.
What's the meaning of yellow again?
Yellow means it's vacant. So the hire that we made, Andrew Corona, he, his family had an opportunity to relocate to the West Coast, so he's gone. But he was here for a year and did a great job and really laid the foundation for a lot of great things. So we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes.
So yellow's very different from purple.
Yeah, yellow's the opposite.
Yellow is funded and there and empty.
Yellow is purple is proposed.
Yep.
Got it?
Think of it necessary.
The Economic Development Liaison, many of you know Jessie Wilson, she used to be the Staff Planner and then she was a Community Development Director. She went back to graduate school and then when she graduated, we were able to convince her to do some work for us and that's worked out really well. I think it was what Barry was talking about, getting a study done. So we are surgically introducing her where we can and one of the things that we've already talked about is having her pick up, at least on the website and some of the other things that we got going under Andrew's leadership on the Economic Development side. So that's, that's Economic Development. Moving on to Historical, sadly, it's just the volunteers and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but one of the things that, going back to the Staff Planner, that we could do a lot better job of with more help is to support our Historical Division, Historical Commission, Historic District. Right now, it's the same thing that I just described, running to the counter, trying to scramble to get things done. The volunteers have a lot of responsibility and, you know, you can run it that way or you can have a Staff Planner and, you know, have it run a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit smoother, a little bit deeper, I guess. It runs smooth, but just having that added depth of staff support, it's kind of not fair to the volunteers. Moving on to Conservation, we have a Conservation Administrator full-time now, which we're very fortunate. For a while there, it had been cut, but for the past few years, it was restored to full-time. They do a lot of their own thing on the Conservation Commission, too. They take their own minutes. Again, Staff Planner could jump in and be a resource for them as well. The Admin column, the Office Manager is someone that worked for me for many years. She retired in August, came back part-time. The Clerk, that's a yellow, she is retiring and that job will be vacant as of January Administrative Specialist and the Administrative Assistant. The Administrative Specialist is a relatively new position from last fiscal year, but that's someone that's jumped in and really helped us a lot with the Zoning Board and some of the other land use boards. Administrative Assistant, that position is someone that's mostly working in recreation, but that's another admin person. The Administrative Secretary, orange. Orange is, the job is vacant, but we have somebody temporarily doing the job. So we scrambled when we realized that almost all of the admin staff was gone and it was a gift from heaven that we got a temp who actually lives in Reading and knows a lot of the people in the town hall and is jumping in and doing this work. And we don't have to make a commitment. She doesn't have to make a commitment, but the work's getting done and it's working out great.
So she's a part-time person?
No, she's full-time.
Benefits, whole works?
No benefits, just hourly contract temp help.
Okay, contract help.
Yep, yep, contract help. So that worked out superb. And she's shadowing the Clerk for the next three weeks so we can make sure she's up to speed on all the stuff the Clerk does.
Jean, is that why because the individual does not desire, this position's funded, true?
Yes. That Administrative Secretary left. She retired.
Correct. But the reason that the new individual hasn't stepped in is it's her preference not to take it on a-
We could, we didn't have the luxury of time to go through the hiring process.
I see, okay. So you still have a process?
I begged, pleaded, pleaded and lit religious candles to HR, just try and get me somebody. And it worked. And we got a temp and that's, that's been phenomenal. Moving on to Elder and Human Services, the Administrator is another Mov because this is adding to the existing position that's already funded. This is the last position from four, five years ago when the division heads were cut to half-time. This is the last position to now request to come back up to full-time. And this is something that we've talked about and we've, when we've had extra budget, we've snuck in a few hours here and there, not snuck, but we've added hours where we can afford it, where we have savings or vacancies. So we've surgically morphed this position into, right now, it's about 30 hours. Town meeting was generous enough to give us a few extra dollars, too, to make that work. In this, in this model, it calls for a 35-hour a week position.
Do you want to bring it to a full-time position?
Full-time.
To service the fastest-growing segment of our population?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. We know that because we studied it this summer, UMass Gerontology Institute.
We've been studying it for years together, I mean, so.
We have, we have. But, but the experts told us we were right all along and that we should be paying attention to this. So, we thought, no time like the present. Moving on, these, all of the other positions are full-time positions. They're positions with people who've been in them for quite a while. There's really nothing new there. And then, of course, the council on aging. The health division, we have the health agent as the division head, another orange, which is the public health nurse, that's another part-time position. And that's orange because the same thing, the person left, but we have someone filling in, contracting, doing the job.
Gene, was the person who left a full-time person?
No, 16 hours a week.
It always was a part-time?
Mm-hmm. It was always less than 37 and 1/2, different variations all at once. But we think 16 hours a week works.
Is it your intent to keep that as a contracted position?
No, we've started the hiring process, we actually have interviews tomorrow. But we have coverage, so that's the good news. And I didn't have to beg anyone. The next one is the health inspectors, and that's another, that's kind of like the building inspectors. That's an interesting combination of folks that help us out with inspections.
So, you have more breathing people than FTEs?
Yeah, yes. Yep, but thankfully, we have a lot of experienced people that come and work in the off-hours, which works out really well for health inspections because restaurants don't open till 5 o'clock. So, if someone works a job in XYZ town and comes over at 4 o'clock, that's perfect.
Gene, do you find that if someone's, you know, we might have three or four people doing it half a third time, that scheduling becomes a problem and that maybe they might have a more of a full-time commitment elsewhere, that they prioritize over Reading, that we're maybe scrambling either for coverage, or it would be better if we had our own person? Or having lots of people cover it, is that a better model because of vacations and things like that, that you can plug and play a little better?
Yeah.
What's the best way?
It's a little unusual with health because so much of their stuff happens after 5 o'clock. So, I really like the idea of having a couple of part-timers who can come in in the later hours of the day and go into these establishments and do what they have to do. The good news is that the health agent can do the inspections, can, if anything comes up, like, you know, that MWRA water main break we had a few years ago, the health agent can step right in as an appointee of the Board of Health. That position is queued right up to take action, so we won't miss a beat. And so, I feel pretty confident that we've got good coverage there. Moving on to recreation, the recreation administrator, she's been in that position now since a couple of years, since the community services director moved on. And the recreation coordinator underneath her is a part-time position. That's something that we'll be filling after the first of the year, start that hiring process. There's an outdoor recordinator, that's a seasonal, and that's paid. You won't find that in the budget numbers that you have because it comes out of their revolving fund, but I wanted to put it up there so you could see there was another position. And then the last, but certainly not least, is the veteran services. And we're, we have our veteran services officer full-time, does a great job. He's really out there in the community, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on with veterans. So, that's basically in living color kind of what this budget looks like.
Gene, would it be possible just to get a color wheel to describe for posterity with these?
Yeah, because I probably won't remember either. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you put that up in the corner and send it to us, that would be great.
Sure. So, really, our budget, our operation is pretty lean and pretty flat. We've had to stop doing a few things because we just don't have the bandwidth. So, like, for example, recreation, their focus is on programs. And the Fall Street Fair, we don't get that involved in it anymore, and thankfully, the Rotary picked that up. So, that's kind of the new model. What can we, what can we, you know, back away from? And we can do that, we can back away from things, and certainly, in this case, it's not a big deal, someone else is taking it. But that'd be the direction that we'd be going in with lean and flat public services. The collaboration, the good news is, when you're on a shoestring operation, you, you work together more. So, that's sort of the silver lining to that cloud, less work in silos. We are looking really closely at where the resources go. We talk a lot about who to send at what meetings.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
That increased collaboration. That seemed to be happening when John Feuto was in the spot that you've indicated, you know, and I know we didn't fill that spot.
No.
But it seems like that happens when you've got someone in that spot.
Yeah.
And the absence of that is a bit painful, and we've seen it.
Yeah.
It actually drives people into their silo when there's not, you know, it seems to me, any.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one way of looking at it. I think where I'm, my point is on the increased collaboration is the, when you don't really have the money to do programming, you get together with other partners and figure things out. And Jane Burns is an expert at, you know, working with this group or that group because we don't have the money to run a program like that. But if we get together with some other folks, and she does a lot with, with the veteran services office, officer, and they can, you know, bring energy and drag all those pots and pans and food to the veterans' breakfast, because there's two of them, and they drag it all back to the senior center. So, not working in silos in that sense, when you have limited resources, is, is one thing. But certainly, to your point, when you have more depth at a higher level, you can drive that even more.
Well, when you've got the oversight person, they see the whole picture.
Yep.
And it makes the collaboration more fluid.
It does.
And it makes the efficiencies improve.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, things that, things don't get lost.
Right.
I think, and, you know, there is a whole lot of less silo work.
Yep, yep.
When you have somebody with the oversight.
Definitely.
It's clearly been absent, you know. And I don't mean that in a bad way.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's a reality of making do with what you have.
Yep, yep. So, one of the things that we started a while ago was closing the senior center at 3 o'clock. The staff stays, but the center is closed to the public. Again, that's living within. Some of the community events that happen, and there's a lot of them in this town, we really talk about who to send. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but a lot happens at these community events that is very positive. So, pulling back on that definitely will have an impact. The building division staff, we expanded the hours so that we now have Friday hours. And again, to that line item that maybe looks a little overstuffed, we couldn't do Friday building hours if we just had, like, one full-time building inspector and, you know, some, some other model of hours. We couldn't do that. These retired building inspectors are happy to come in and do the work and work part-time. They'll work on Friday, they don't care. The whole rest of the town hall is closed on Fridays, so to get someone to work on Friday, that's, that'd be tough. The flip side of that is now on Tuesday nights, which used to be a popular night for the public to come in and ask questions, we have someone there, but not really to handle the kind of questions that we used to get. Basic questions, yeah. I'm going to walk you through some data on permitting, and I apologize for how small it is. There'll be some better charts and graphs that will make it a little bit clearer. But as I note up in the left-hand corner, the division lead currently is the building commissioner, and that is Glenn Redmond, who was with the town for many years as the commissioner and came back part-time as the commissioner. Then we have that complement of part-time inspectors and a full-time permits coordinator, and that's how that runs. But you can see, if you can read the numbers, in 2017, and that only is up until about a month ago, that we're trending to be consistent with the past few years of very, very high numbers of permits, especially the building permits. The fees are up there, and the inspections are up there. So, I'm going to walk you through it so you can see it a little bit easier. The blue is the building permits, the red is the wiring, and the green is the plumbing and gas permits. The big peak in 2015 for building had to do with those big projects that we were permitting, Reading Woods, Johnson Woods. Those, those were driving a lot of that, so it's probably a little artificially high.
So, is the number we're looking at for this year more the norm, in your opinion?
Yeah, yeah. The past, this year and the past few years is about where we're at. We issue about 1,000 building permits a year.
But with all these projects that we're now talking about, 18, 19, and 20, you're going to see those numbers mirror 15?
Yes. Right, right now, I'm looking at permitting in 2018, in the calendar year 2018. I've got 16 major projects that I'm looking at permitting, major.
That's, that's 50 permits a week of one form or another.
Correct.
It boggles the, I mean, it, it boggles the imagination.
But everything's a permit.
Everything's a permit.
You know, I mean, so, you know, you fix your, you fix your porch, it's a permit.
Right.
It's the same permit as building a house.
Yeah.
I mean, in the count, am I right about that?
Yeah, it's, sometimes people will come in and they'll get one building permit, and they'll do a major renovation of their home with an addition and all that. And that, that's a little misleading because that's only one building permit. But then you'll have other ones where they'll come in and they'll pull a permit for this, and then they'll come back, "I really, the deck was worse than I thought it was, now I got to build a deck," and, you know, they'll, it'll kind of morph into a couple more permits.
But one is $5,000 with the work, and the other is $200,000 with the work. And it's, the count is the same.
Yes, and it also, by, these quantitative numbers and graphs I'm going to throw out to you, I'm just doing that because I think it's interesting. It really doesn't tell the story of what goes into it. So, I think that's a really important point. I mean, the wiring and plumbing inspectors, they're pumping out permits all day long, you know, but even at their level, sometimes they've got to go back two and three times to inspect that work.
They still have to go there.
They have to go there, and they have to go repeatedly. It's not like one and done, even for a bathroom.
Well, and then when they find something that needs to be fixed, then that means it's a second trip.
Right.
And maybe a third trip.
Right.
And, you know, when you mention 16 major projects, that's not like fixing the porch.
No.
I mean, even though, you know, technically, it's one permit, I mean, that keeps some, 16 projects keep some, a full-time person.
Yep.
Busy all year.
Yeah.
Could, for sure.
Yep.
So, Gene, on that graph, except for the billing permit burp that you had, that you explained in 2015, 16, it looks like since 2012, 2013, the wiring and plumbing permits are somewhat flat. They bump up and down a little bit, but it looks like there was growth from 2009 to 2012, and then sort of somewhat flattened out. Obviously, there's a little noise in the system, but.
Yeah, there's no question that we see this kind of activity in these kind of markets. When everything tanked in 2009, you know, you can see it in the chart, we weren't that busy. But after the recession, things got busy and people started pulling permits and doing work. So, you know, it's hard to know how long this will go in this direction, but I can tell you, when I know about 2018, the projects in the queue, we're going to have a busy year.
So, Gene, in terms of, I know we have the permits fund.
Yep.
And I think those are more dedicated for some of the larger projects. So, you know, where we might be talking about adding some costs on one side, we've got a source of funds paid for it that may not necessarily be from the levy, is that true?
I better answer that.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I looked into that maybe six or months or so ago, Barry, and I was surprised, since I've been here, what I learned that I missed. Town meeting has to authorize which projects' permit fees go into that fund. And I somehow didn't realize how many times that had happened in the past. I must have been paying attention. I think there've been five projects in the past, so it's a fair question for the future for us to discuss, which of these large projects ought to go into the permits revolving fund and then to ask town meeting? I have no answer to that, but, you know, you've seen, well, I'll try to do it from memory. Haven Street went into it. Johnson Woods, Pulte, what am I forgetting?
Archstone.
Yes, thank you, Archstone. And I think there's a fifth, wasn't as large. But that's a fair point and a fair discussion. The permits revolving fund is.
Stop and change? No.
I don't, I don't know, Bill. You know, I was trying to think of the developments down at Walker's Brook. Generally, I don't think so. And there was a, you know, an argument, why shouldn't they have? They're meant to absorb, their one-time revenues are meant to absorb one-time costs, such as you need extra building inspector hours. So, once upon a time, we had an assistant building inspector for a number of years, three or four, paid by the permits revolving fund, for instance. So, that's a, that's a good.
And that's where we hired our economic development director.
Yeah.
So.
And again, these numbers are only, you know, I don't have the last, you're missing the last six weeks of the year with these numbers, too. So, it's, if it looks a little low in 2017, that asterisk means you don't have full data.
Okay.
Here's the inspection activity, and as I was saying, the inspections can be more demanding than the actual permitting because it's repeated visits, repeated times that maybe the contractor, you know, thought they were going to be ready, but then they weren't ready when the, when the team got there. So, it's a lot of back and forth with the inspection activity. Permitting revenue, I think it's important to see the, the wiring and the plumbing and gas revenue on the bottom. I know we've talked about revenue, we've talked about fees. I've done a ton of research on this. From where I sit, and I'll just say this right up front, my recommendation is to hold off on fees until we get through some of the bigger conversations we're having as a community about what's going on with, with anything else related to taxes and overrides and all of that. I don't want to be, you know, the first one out raising rates when the really important stuff needs to go first. This is not going to make a big difference one way or the other. We know, we already know how we want to change the fees so that it's easier and that it makes more sense and it's more in line with other communities. We have it ready to go. I just think it's better to, to hold off until we have that other important conversation first. That would be my recommendation.
Although, we did have, we did raise the parking fees, the depot parking fees.
Mm-hmm.
With an eye towards making it more similar to other communities and to reflect the costs.
Yep.
Involved. And we did that, at least I did that, in, in part with an eye towards an override and showing that we are leaving no stone unturned, as John says.
Yep. I'm going to tell a little story about a deck. So, because I spent a little bit of time hanging around the counter in the office, I, I overheard the building inspector talking to a guy from Moynihan Lumber about a deck project. And they were talking about how this deck project needed a variance because the way the house was built in the 80s, you would never build a house like this. It was so close to the wetland areas, so close to the setback, that you could never make it work in zoning to put a normal, regular 20 by 20 deck on the back of this house. It had like a, a two-foot deck. So, we looked at the plan and said, "Oh, yeah, well, you have to go to zoning board because you don't meet setbacks. You can't meet setbacks." And he said, "Well, oh, jeez, what is that going to mean?" Well, first of all, you got to have a better survey, you know, engineered survey of the land. Ah, that's going to cost me $2,500. "Oh, that's going to cost me $2,500. It's going to cost, take six weeks." "Yep. All right, what else? Well, then you've got to file this and apply for that and this and that." "Okay." I said to the guy, "Can I just ask you a question? How much is the deck? What's the cost?" I said, "Yeah, just curious." "It's $48,000."
Deck.
I said, "For a deck?" "Oh, it's the composite material and this and that." I go, "Yeah, that's what it costs, $48,000." That's the labor and the materials for Moynihan Lumber to go out and build a 20-by-20 deck.
That's crazy.
I was shocked. That's the kind of projects that we see every day.
Hundred dollars a square foot.
Crazy, crazy things that you can't even imagine the cost.
I hope you passed along to the tax code.
Oh, yes.
So, when we talk about costs, and we talk about processes, efficiencies, everybody always comes to the counter with a plan that they got when they bought the house 25 years ago. The plan is never good enough. Somebody has to go out and spend money on an engineered plan, because there isn't all the information that we need to understand what's going on. So I feel like that cost alone is like a right-upfront whack that the applicant gets before they even do anything. And so to add to the fees, I think we should, but I'm just a little reticent to do that right out of the gate. One thing I am very proud of is how quickly we turn around our permits. Seventy-three percent of building permits are issued immediately or the next day. That's pretty good.
Is that because, has the permits coordinator been sort of the driver on that?
Yes.
Is that kind of what drove that?
Yes.
Because when we did our headset, that was one of the biggest complaints about, takes forever to get anything approved in this town.
Well, it doesn't. Unless you have one of those lousy plans, then you do.
Right. Which we then basically modified for free.
Yes, yeah.
That's an important piece of work.
I think it is.
We spent, for a half-time position, improve the quality of the service that people get.
Jean, when a 20-by-20 deck is added to a house, how does the fact that that's added, communicated to our GIS person, so they can depict that build out correctly? Maybe Bob can answer that.
I don't know if they do every...
We have a bunch of systems that were sold, computer systems sold to us as highly integratable. Of course, they don't integrate at all. Human beings have to walk stuff around. So, the GIS and the assessing all get the data, theory electronically, and practice maybe by hand delivery on a regular basis. So they can both, you know, Kim can map it if she needs to for the wetlands, which is pretty rare. It has to be a big project for her to really be impacted. But more importantly, the assessors know there's been a deck added, generally in the revale every three years now, every five years they capture that.
Okay, thanks.
Jean, is there a story in the 27% of those that are beyond two days?
Yes, those are those people with those rotten plans.
I see.
And other things that, you know, the contractor doesn't have a license, or forgot to renew, or, it's some minutia thing, or it's a big thing. But it's something that, it's just a mess. Every once in a while, if it's a big project, the building inspector needs to spend some time looking at it, or if it's a question on zoning, we'll get together and we'll look at it. But most of the time, it's small stuff that hold people up, and so I'd say, but there might be other things. And we're happy about expedited permitting as one way that we've improved, but I'm sure there are other things that we could do better. And what I am planning on doing is issuing a survey, we already have it drafted, and asking our applicants, contractors, homeowners, we have the database, thankfully, because we have our software program. The Kims, Kim, the permits coordinator, and Kim, the GIS coordinator, have already put the list together for me. And we're going to ask, tell us what your experience was like.
Good.
Tell us what you think about our fees. Tell us what you think about how we do things, and what can we do better?
So, I was thinking, is that a rhetorical question that you put up there? Do you kind of know some of the answer in your mind about if we were able to do A, B, and C, we'd be better? I mean, do you sort of have that, or are you still kind of just sort of searching and...
I'm kind of hoping that we'll get people that will speak to the first bullet and say, "I've got nothing to say, I got my permit right then and there." I'm hoping that we'll get some of that. I think we'll get some of that. And I know that our team does a great job, so I think we'll get some positives. But I know that there are always ways that we can improve. And I want to know, what are those ways? And I'm not sure I do know. I certainly feel more comfortable asking the people who've been through the process, what was it like? And if I called them up and asked them, they wouldn't tell me. Because I've done that.
But hide behind a survey, they might...
I've done that. I said, "How was it?" "Oh, it was great." "Okay." They don't want to, they don't want to get messed up the next time they come in for a permit. So, I get that. That's why I like the survey. And I'm really glad that we can go back two, three years to the database of who pulled a permit.
I just want to add that when Jean got here shortly thereafter, the way the process worked was the building inspector looked at permits once a week. When the building inspector was done, then conservation looked at things without being flagged, and it goes to every single one to see, does this affect me? And so on, down the food chain. So not surprisingly, it took three or four weeks for any permit to get approved. And that's actually very typical in cities and towns. This is a phenomenal difference, but the legend still lives on from those days, and that's why the survey is so important. What really happened? Never mind the stories you hear, and, you know, the board will hear some stories sometimes, and then you ask the question, "When did that happen?" Well, that was, you know, seven or eight or 15 years ago. Okay, things are different. I think it's important to recognize that, and I agree with you, Barry. You know, the headset did open our eyes to a few things. This is one of them.
Jean, I think the survey is a great, a really good idea. It'll give you and the board some valuable feedback. I would just caution against asking people if they think about the fees. Few people will say, "The fee is too low." And my wife would be quick to point out to me that I didn't ask her about her depot fee, parking fee, before we raised it. So, there, just be aware that that is out there.
Okay.
John? Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, Mark.
I guess the elephant in the room. I appreciate, Jean, your comment on, you know, hey, maybe it's not the right time to change the fee. But what would the impact be? Say you've done the analysis, what would the impact be?
Yeah, it's less than $50,000 in a year. It's certainly, with the kinds of things we're talking about, it's not anything major. So to, I guess my feeling is, is it worth it to go through upsetting the apple cart for a very small return?
The only counter to that would be that if we don't take all the small things, or any of the small things, we'll never end up getting them. So I just, I think we need to talk through what that is.
Well, we get a lot of...
About 10%, roughly.
We get a lot of angry people at the counter who are mad they have to spend $2,500 on an engineered plot plan to put a deck on, even when they're spending $48,000. That's a real story.
But they're not paying the $2,500 to us.
No, but we're saying we need a plan, and they're angry. They're angry, because they have to spend that money and have that delay.
And that's before they write the check for the permit?
That's before, we haven't even gotten to that yet.
Write the check.
We haven't even gotten to that yet.
There's not much we can do about that, them's the rules. But I think that we do make sure, we need, do need to try to cover our costs with fees in this area, especially when we're delivering, it sounds like, faster service.
Yeah, it's something we've spent a lot of time looking at, and I agree that the fees should be adjusted, it's just a question of when. Now I'm going to switch over to planning, and Julie Mercier, who a lot of you know as the Community Development Director, and she leads that division. And I pulled this quote off of the American Planning Association, "Planning provides the foundation for communities to thrive. Planning empowers residents to envision new possibilities and prepare for the future." That's really what we're talking about. And some of the things that we've done in planning is streamlining the development review, and we've eased the zoning requirements. We had the major rewrite of zoning a few years ago, but even in the last couple of years, we've made it easier to get through a minor site plan review, and that's been something that's worked very well. It's a lot more work for staff, and there's no fees associated with it, but we can get people through so that a new business opening up like the bookstore doesn't have to go through all kinds of crazy stuff with planning board and this and that. Now, we can charge those people. We can take the bookstore and say, "Hey, you've got to pay $1,000, it's a minor site plan review." We can do that. It's whatever, you know...
I think that's ill-advised in light of the economic development plans that we've tried to work on.
For $1,000, is it worth going there?
The focus of tonight is to go through the IS map, the way we are built now, the today map. There's probably work we can do around the edges, but the primary goal here is to get the baseline gap around town operations. The fees will be a secondary or tertiary factor on that, and I think it's actually distracting even to bring them up right now.
The other thing we spend a lot of time on is our collaboration and working with other departments like engineering. We do development review teams, we get everyone around the table, we flesh out what the issues are long before these proposals make their way, before the planning board or the zoning board. We do pre-construction, so that when they get underway with their permits, we don't have major issues with them clogging up the streets with pickup trucks and creating all kinds of nightmares around town. The community partners piece is a big piece of planning. We do a lot with our regional planning agency, the North Suburban Planning Council, I talked about the regional housing office that we started. We get together with the economic development directors from surrounding towns, and we work a lot with our state partners, and they come in and support a lot of our initiatives. And having Jay Ash at our Economic Development Summit last fall was really great, and being plugged into that network really serves us well on our efforts with planning and economic development. We do spend a lot of time doing regulatory work, zoning violations, enforcement, we respond to complaints, get a lot of complaints. I usually try and get him, pawn him off to Matt, but he usually sends them back to me. We spend a lot of time on the boards, as I've mentioned. A key change back in 2013 was getting this new software program to do permitting and to do, as Bob mentioned, the review so that conservation, historic, all of the components of the review are tied together in one organized fashion, as opposed to the way we used to do it. People would just run in and out of the building inspector's office and say, "Don't issue that permit, let me look at it first." So this is a much more civilized way of doing things, and with the permits coordinator, we're able to function very well. Losing that staff planner, and we even had a planning intern back in 2016, has made it enormously challenging. We did add an administrative specialist position in 2017, and that has helped us with our nighttime government. And then just to mention there about the CPDC was short, a full member, but we are fully staffed on CPDC, so that's worked out well. These are the kinds of things we do in planning, everything from master planning, the parking study, housing production plan, bike and pedestrian plan, cultural district exploratory study, economic development action plan, hazard mitigation plan update, South Main Street roadway diet, housing production plan renewal, and wayfinding and branding. The economic development director, I'm just going to talk about for a minute, you know, we really looked, we spent a lot of time on economic development planning, but you can't always plan, even though I do love planning. You actually have to do things once in a while. And then when we had the opportunity to hire this economic development director who was so good, he actually went into the community and began to develop relationships with the community, with the business community, with the realtors, with all of the people that have an opinion about Reading, and met with them, and worked with them. How can we get economic development going? How can we make things positive in this area? And that was a huge benefit. So, the work that he's done, and the studies that we've done, the summit that we held, and so many more things that we've done in the past year has really laid a very nice foundation.
I wonder if you read the paper this morning, that the government has proposed on the zoning?
Yes.
To 30%,
Yep.
And this is the sound of the USO, Andrew, from the state. If that's something you might want to...
Yep, yep, yep.
Did Andrew give us an exit summary?
He did.
That's not a surprise. I was sure he would be very thorough. I think that would be very interesting.
No, it was good, it was good. Bob and I had a good meeting with him.
Pardon me?
I actually wish to mouth. I'm sorry you were here so long, I wish to mouth.
Thank you.
I'm sure it made his day, Bill.
This is just a summary of some of the meetings. We meet about anywhere between 20 and 23 times a year with CPDC. We do a lot of plan endorsements, subdivisions, site plan reviews, signed permits, 40-yard developments, and the like. And then there's all the planning stories. And the intangible story that I had asked everyone to give me something to talk about, in this case, it was Julie, who had been here for almost two years and really has worked hard at this collaboration piece with all the staff divisions on projects, especially conservation and engineering, so that these projects can go above and beyond and not just be your typical projects, but really speak well to the town of Reading. This slide, most of you have seen before, this is our subsidized housing inventory. This is the game that the state plays with us on whether or not we're there yet. Are we there yet? Are we there yet? Well, we're not there yet, but we're getting close. And we're only 117 units short of meeting the state requirement of 10% affordable housing. So we are getting, as they say, wicked close.
That'll change again in 2020.
Yeah.
Isn't that when it changes again, when we have a new census?
That's it. The bad news is, we continue to be challenged with this formula. But if everything goes the right way and all these projects happen, we think we're going to get to 10.99% soon. So...
Any forecast on what you think the new numerator and denominator will be?
I don't know. I really don't. I can't even venture a guess.
Does that, all the new people that moved in, like, just those new projects?
Well, yeah, I mean, we know, I mean, we have some general idea.
Oh, I thought you even said, "When," you mean, how much?
No, no, I know it's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, 2020, but...
I think we're going to probably be a couple hundred units short.
Well, at the minimum, all of the SHI that you added gets added to the denominator.
Right.
So this, how much of that 841 was added since 2010? Do you have an opinion?
You know, it's, this one's going to be trickier, because there were so many big projects that Reading Woods is really going to tip the scales and make this a tougher, a tougher thing.
Because of the amount, because of the amount of residents.
There's so many units, yeah.
Oh, that's true.
There's so many units.
That's going to...
So even if that's 20% affordable, it's 80% of them are not available.
Exactly, exactly.
It's only for...
That one hurts, for this exercise.
Well, for this exercise, but from a revenue standpoint, you know, it was a pretty serious contribution to the bottom line.
The good news is that we have a two-year certification. Safe harbor is in place. Now, the first year of that is almost gone, but through February 22nd, 2019, we have a safe harbor. What we do with it, that's another discussion, but we're only one of a handful of communities that have accomplished that. So I think that's, even with how crazy this whole thing is, that's a big accomplishment.
Jean, when you presented the map of Massachusetts, there was a lot of communities colored white.
Yep.
They don't have any track record?
They're not participating.
What's the state doing about that?
Nothing.
Really?
No penalty for non-compliance.
The only, the only thing that you lose out on, if you say, "I'm not, just not even going to worry about this," is you don't get that safe harbor. The only way you get to have this safe harbor is if you have a housing production plan, which is why... which is why we're updating the one we have so we can stay current. It's a lot of work.
Well, those white communities, those communities that were, didn't have a color are, you know, they're free, they're open season for 40B.
Absolutely.
I mean, anybody can come in there and almost do anything they wanna do.
They're not economic hotbeds.
Yep. If you don't try and do this kind of thing to be proactive and plan, then all bets are off on what could go where. This 40B, it could go anywhere. Literally, it does not have to go by any local zoning. So we're, I think we're headed in the right direction this way, and hopefully, hopefully, you know, it'll all work out. I'm just gonna quickly go through, 'cause I know I'm taking way too much time, but conservation, there's a lot of great things happening here. Again, this position had been part-time. It's been full-time for a couple of years now. That spends a lot of time supporting the Conservation Commission, spends a lot of time, like the building inspectors and the planners, at the counter, helping people understand the process of the permitting. And it also oversees the Matera Cabin and spends a lot of time at town events, works with the Boy Scouts and schools and workshops on environmental issues. And so the, I guess the key thing here was Matera Cabin was used 96 times for Redding Recreation Program days and 32 rental days, for a total of 128 active use days. So it's, it's used pretty heavily. The, you know, the fact that we have it, I think, is a good resource. And then the revenue from the fees, which I'll talk to you about in a minute, that has kicked up, especially in that local bylaw, and you'll see that. The one thing I would wanna mention is that the commission adopted a tree policy, which allows tree removal without a permit or a public meeting requirement, so that simplifies that. But I think it's, I'm not gonna explain it as well as Chuck could, but it's a one-for-one. If you're, if you're losing trees, you gotta replace the tree. And then this intangible story was about a homeowner that had a conservation restriction. It was a legal binding document. They wanted to do some things, and they came back to the commission, and, you know, the commission didn't really have to relinquish anything that was in that document, but they did find a way to work through it and came up with a project that was gonna work for the commission and for the applicant. So that's the kind of direction we're going in here to try and work with people, you know, still going by our regulations, but trying to find ways to work things out.
I would just like to stress that that is such an important position, the conservation administrator, the personality, the approach to the customer makes all the difference.
It does.
We have not always had people of Chuck's caliber in that position.
Right.
And we've earned a bad reputation because of it.
We did a survey a few years ago. In fact, I used that for the building inspector's survey. I pulled the old survey out that we did on conservation, and I guess I forgot some of the comments that we got. Yeah, we, we heard a lot of bad stuff, but we're doing better. This is, again, just a picture, a snapshot of where we are on the permits. Little bit clearer like this, the fees. The red is the Redding General Bylaw. The blue is the State Limitless Protection Act. So you can see the fees are up. I won't bore you with this. Moving on, historic. Again, this is mostly volunteers. Some support from planning and engineering staff, but I think with a staff planner, we can really do a better job of working with historic. They do a lot of great work, and there's a lot to this, and I'd love to be able to help them out and give them some staff support. Historic District met 11 times in 2017, kind of a lot, and Historical Commission met 19 times and had four demolition delay applications, which is kind of a lot. Now, moving on to health. As I mentioned before, this is a big area from nuisance complaints to housing to food establishments, tobacco, on and on and on of what we permit under health. The mandatory minimum of two routine inspections for all establishments, that's the schedule that we go by. That's convenience store, gas stations, restaurants, obviously. This year, we worked with North Redding, and we did a few different things around the flu clinics. We had one or two at Walmart. We had one at the Coolidge, the Town Hall, the DPW, the residents at Pearl, and then the multiple home visits. And this is where we, back to my point earlier about how when your resources are thin, you figure a way to work with others. And kudos to the health agent for figuring out a way with, you know, limited hours of the public health nurse to get this done. And as far as I know, any time someone needed a home visit from our public health nurse, we never had a problem. So that's been a good program. The, the changes in 2017, you know, we're staying current with the 3B emergency preparedness, which is also something that comes under health. And we're working very closely with the Board of Health on so many initiatives. And the Code Red Emergency Awareness for residential and business community, that's been something we've been working on, too. So you can see the key stats. The Fall Street Fair had 47 establishments, so that was a lot of work for the inspectors and the health agent. And five new food establishments came into Redding, and they need, that takes a lot of work. You gotta look up, review the plans in the kitchen and make sure and verify. So we're glad to have them, and we're glad that they're safe. And 49 complaints were documented between housing nuisance and food. That's, that's almost one a week, which is a little bit unusual. And again, working with North Redding, we've just found ways to get all those flu vaccines done and, you know, get the job done. Elder and Human Services, this is led by Jane Burns, the Human Elder Services Administrator. There's a lot I could say about Human Elder Services. We had UMass do a needs assessment this summer. We learned a lot about what are the things that we need to do with this division, what are the things that we're, should be thinking about and planning for this fastest-growing segment of the population, this most frail, the most fragile population in the town, most vulnerable, most isolated. What could we, what should we be doing? What should we be focusing on? And certainly, transportation is top of the list, no surprise. But also, so many of them are in need of referrals for healthcare, food stamps. You'd be surprised at how many we have come for fuel assistance and all of the things that, that we do every day to, to try and service this population. So we've been lucky to get some grant funding. We've been doing this memory cafe, which has been fantastic. This is for, I guess it's families that come and they're dealing with memory loss, and they're very creative ways of working with little workshops with the caregivers, with the family members to, to have some activities. So many other things, working with the high school boys hockey, the lacrosse team, shoveling program. And I guess the intangible story was the story I briefly alluded to about the Veterans Day breakfast and how popular that's gotten, but the crazy way that we had to pull that off by dragging everything from the senior center to the Masons and...
But the event was so well attended.
The event was great. It was great, and it was worth it, but it's a lot of work doing it that way.
So, Jean? The Masonic Lodge, they donated that. They didn't charge us, did they, for that? I don't think they did.
I don't think they did.
No, I'm fairly certain that they did.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Again, you know, we look to these public-private partnerships and, because that's a rental hall that we were able to use without, without cost, so.
So, Jean, I think you had, on your color, color wheel chart, you had proposed, I think, a halftime, another halftime coordinator.
It would be taking the...
Taking the halftime, making it full?
Yeah, it's about a halftime that we go. Right now, we're kinda squeaking by at about 30 hours. It would go to 35.
So the outcomes that you would expect from that extra staff position, would that be just more robust, you know, deeper robust of what you just put on the chart, or doing things that we're not doing?
There's a couple of things that, that, that we're working on, but we could be doing more. Like, the administrator's done a great job bringing the dementia-friendly program to the town, and she had a program last week. It was excellent. So becoming a dementia-friendly community is really an interesting idea and something that we really should be thinking about. And there's a whole lot to it, but the long and the short of it is, is just having trainings like, for example, in the restaurants, so that when we have our seniors with memory loss, they can go in and have a meal and have a nice night out, and the staff is trained in a way to manage that. That's just one little example of how a dementia-friendly community could work. And so I think there's a huge opportunity there for the administrator to, to get that, she's already started. But it's, it's like what I was describing before in planning. You know, we all just jump in and get the job done, but with more hours, I think, I think it can be done in a way that, that we can work a little bit smarter.
Jean, do you have an opinion, and it can only be an opinion, to what degree the current center itself constrains your, these numbers on the screen?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about it with UMass, and we heard a little bit about it from the focus groups that they had. And we know that there are some people that don't come to the senior center because when you get there, the bathroom is in the basement or up on the second floor, and they're just not comfortable having to navigate stairs or an elevator to get to the bathroom.
Do you think that's a 10% number, or do you think it's a 50% number?
Hmm, I, I think...
I know it's impossible, but your best judgment.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, that's an interesting question. I think that, you know, frail elders are hesitant to be in an environment they don't, they don't really feel, you know, they can be okay in.
You talked about the elevators and the different floors. Is the capacity itself a limiter here as well?
Yes. Yeah.
Just the pure size of the location.
Yeah, it's definitely...
Because it, well, Witness, we had to take the Veterans Day breakfast out of there.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no way you could've fit that.
And I know when we have the volunteer day, I mean, the place is bursting at the seams. Thankfully, we have that many volunteers, but again, space is a problem.
We're about the smallest and among our peers.
Yeah.
Far as square footage.
And I would think also the limitations of that kitchen are, are huge.
Yeah.
That would just be my guess.
So the thing I'm poking at is these numbers would be measurably larger, I believe, if the facility were right-sized for the population. It's hard to know how much more, but my guess is it's more than 10%.
I would say. And maybe it doesn't end up being a senior center. The model that we've seen is more of a community center. Shouldn't the veterans...
That's why you change the name.
Shouldn't the Veterans Day be there?
Well, the beauty of it is that it gets used, you know, more of the, all of the waking hours instead of some of the waking hours.
Right.
But you've gotta have the capacity to drive that with the space itself.
Yep.
And let's face it, much as that's a, it's a quaint, wonderful building, meeting those demands of the size of the crowds, and you can't even think about community center because it really can't handle the needs of our, of our population. It's over 60 now, so.
Yeah, it really doesn't. I mean, quaint, it is quaint. Quaint, lovely.
It's a lovely building, but it just, it doesn't get there. And it's facilities. I mean, being able to, you know, I know, I think Jane's in the audience. We were speaking about the fact that, that the kitchen is limited.
Yep.
I mean, it's kind of a warm-up kitchen, really.
Yeah. So these are just some, some more graphs that show you kind of where we're at. Oh, sorry.
Question?
Yeah, question. George Capson Colvin Road. When I went to the town fair earlier this year, interesting comment personally at the elders' table. When I talked about the need for an override and the schools and community need more funds and also the elderly population, the senior center, et cetera, this person said, yes, but we'll be at the bottom of the list. And I think that's something to bear in mind, that we wanna make sure that we treat the entire community, the young, the old, collaborating together.
Yep.
Well said, George.
So the things that, the primary things that our needs assessment told us is, we need, for the Pleasant Street Center, improved accessibility, a first-floor bathroom, and a modified layout to improve flow and alleviate overcrowding. We also could do a little more with deepening the knowledge of existing programs and services. So again, extra hours for that administrator, get the word out more on the programming that we are doing. And again, going back to the topic of partnerships and our community partners, collaborating more with them and doing more that way. The property tax worker program, when we compare ourselves to other communities, it's definitely for expansion. And then just some of the logistics of the center, which I know we've talked about, you know, the staffing level, we're not only among the smallest senior center, we're among the most thinly-staffed of our peers. So we could ask for a lot more to right-size the staffing level.
Does one follow the other, though? As you right-size the center, then you have to right-size the staff?
Yes.
Makes sense.
Definitely.
Jean, has the board, and I will make this brief, 'cause I know you're...
No, it's okay.
Has, have we talked, before I got on the board, has there been talk about expanding the size of that center in place?
Or location, or both.
It's come up, but it's really gotten to a sharp point with this gerontology study, which really sharpened it from a, kind of a survey of the beneficiaries.
There have been some general discussions about public-private partnerships. Do you wanna say anything about that?
Well, I think we're gonna, we could run off the rails here.
You know, it's a good question, and it, and we have talked about it, and we need to talk about it more. But tonight is, I mean, this is kind of a, kind of an opener to that. We are gonna be talking about new potential capital needs, projects down the road. I would assume that this project could be in the discussion.
Yeah. Might not be a build by the town. There's various options.
Okay, thanks.
And then just, so this is, I'll do rec and vets, and then we'll go line by line, if that's okay. Everyone knows recreation. It's the feel-good group. They're doing all the stuff with the kids and education and just really making Redding shine. 450 programs and classes in FY17, and they do a lot of stuff online, which is great, and people sign up online, so that's less demands of people coming in the office or calling or whatever. They really got this working beautifully. They oversee the fields and the playgrounds. They do field scheduling. They do playground projects. They have over 40 seasonal staff that do the programming. And then they coordinate town-wide events such as downtown trick-or-treat, Halloween parade, egg hunt, summer concert series, and other social engagement and community activities. They sell out every year on the summer camp, all eight weeks. The Saturday Night Lights flag football's been a huge success, the Hunt Playground renovation, and then the resurfacing projects, working with the Parks Department.
You guys tell us where the kids are climbing there. That's...
Oh.
Not in Redding.
That was not in Redding. That was something that they had to go, and, and there's a little teeny-tiny print. Recreation now plans off-site programs due to lack of facility space.
Oh, yeah.
We put that in very tiny print.
But those are ideas that need to be talked about, too.
Yep.
Because those are happening in a lot of communities.
Yep. So you can see the red is FY17 and the blue is FY16, that, you know, everything's going strong with the programs. They're about the same, a little bit higher, but these are tremendously popular programs that the community just loves. Those are the top three, Summer Camp, Saturday Night Lights, and the Rec... Uh, those are the top three, summer camp, Saturday Night Lights, and the rec in-town Sunday basketball. And we generate a lot of revenue, and this goes into a revolving fund to pay for the expenses of running these things. So the only thing you see in this budget is the cost of staff. Um, and then last but absolutely not least is the Veteran Services Division, and that's Kevin Bowmiller, our Veteran Services Officer, and Kevin and Jane are in the, in the audience tonight, as is Laura, so, um, thank you for coming tonight, I should've pointed that out earlier. Um, but as you know, the goal is to, um, use this funding, use these, um, state dollars, um, wisely. Reading's share is only twenty-five percent, so that's pretty good. Um, and there's a lot of work goes into even finding the people who would be eligible for these benefits. So many people don't come forward, and I know Kevin spends a lot of time, you know, in the community so that he can, he can, uh, direct those resources where they're needed. Um, word of mouth is the best, obviously, um, and the aid that they provide can actually go for, um, assisted living or nursing home expenses, and many Reading families qualify for that type of aid, so that's a big help. Um, the, Kevin's out in the community, which is great, he does the scuttlebutt at Pleasant Street Center, which is always very, very popular, I think, um, that's, that's just been a win-win for everybody. And, um, the Vetra Spec Paperless VA Claims Processing Program was implemented in 2017, so that even makes it more efficient to do everything electronically and, um, uh, really is a, is a much, much better, like our permit system, better way of running things. And you see the stats there for who's collecting these, um, benefits. And this, of course, is the best, it's the pictures of who we, who we help with these programs, and, um, uh, the guy on the, on the left-hand side, I was able to be there for that, which was a fantastic day, um, and seeing him get his sergeant stripes after, I don't know how many years it's been, um, he was a, uh, guy that did the Battle of Bataan, um, and-
The death march.
The Bataan Death March was intense, and he couldn't have been happier that day to get his, uh, his sergeant status. So I think that is pretty much my presentation. I'll run through quickly my notes on, um, where we're at with the actual budget, I think I've covered broadly where we're going, but just to go back to the detail on the actual budget. So the first thing, um, is, um, under Public Services Administration, um, where it says the Office Manager, that is a position that, um, is now part-time, that was always a full-time position, so that's been a reduction. Um, the Administrative Specialist is the second thing I wanted to highlight, that's in that same grouping under Public Services Administration, um, and that-
Is that the, that's the proposed new?
That's the zoning board.
I don't know.
No, that was, both of these were, uh, the Office Manager retired just this summer, came back part-time, so that position went, in this budget, new to halftime.
So that's, that's a half?
That's a half, yeah. And then the, um, the Administrative Services, the Administrative Specialist, um, is a, is a position we added last fiscal year, and, um, and that's, I'm just highlighting that because we've actually filled the job over the summer.
Just, just to be clear, though, Jean has used the word "add" a few times, um, there's been some tractions on the other side of that.
That's what I was gonna ask about, then.
So the permits coordinator used to be a clerical position, for instance, and so on and so forth.
Right.
Can I make a, what may be helpful is, I mean, you did a great job at sort of laying out kind of where you see sort of the changes, some of the adds, you know, maybe some of the things that aren't filled, um, and a great job of telling the story. I mean, I, I think, I think budgets should be all stories and less numbers, but that's just me. But what would be helpful is to kind of just maybe take those changes and put them on a one-page or saying, this is kind of what we'd like to see, the cost, this is what we didn't add in, this is the expenses, rather than try to go through and find each one of those different colored things on this, I, I'm not gonna be able to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know, obviously, not now, but-
Yeah.
But to that point, Jean, I think that, you know, you had three, three positions, and you had one expanded hours.
Right.
So if what we could do is, that represents some amount of the sixteen percent increase that your department's looking for. So if your department's looking for sixteen percent increase and those three-plus positions account for, you know, eighty percent of that, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think that's gonna be the easier way for us to, you know, either take it into battle or, you know, or not.
And maybe as a message to the other folks who aren't up yet, or the ones who are going tomorrow, you know, maybe just to do that, because this way we can just look at it and say-
Just see a snapshot.
This, we, we know the story of what we're gonna get if we add this, now it's just a question of, what do we think's important?
Yeah.
And what does it really cost?
Right.
So, you know, so in the big picture of things, you have a sixteen percent increase, okay?
Right.
We fundamentally know that theoretically we've got a two-and-a-half percent revenue increase, so, you know, you've got a delta.
Yep.
Um, and that delta, you know, is somewhere around fourteen percent, and, you know, in trying to give advice, which is really all we can do, or to carry the message out to the public-
Yep.
-what we need to be able to do is quantify that. So, you know, so essentially, you've got a fourteen percent delta between what we've got, you know, when it all gets down to it, this is just arithmetic, I mean, you know, it's a piece of paper and a pencil, and it says, this is how much you got, this is how much you can spend, and so then it becomes a quantifiable issue. These positions that you've talked about, um, adding three-plus, you know, three-plus some hours, I, I mean, you make a very strong case in every one of these, and so for us to be able to carry that message out to the, to the voters who ultimately have to make that decision, we, I think it'd really be valuable if we could kind of boil that down to something simple, um, of what that really means in money.
Okay.
So.
I have one question on that also, could you also do it in head count? I know we've talked about this in the past, but just specifically, so it's a change of two-point-two-five people.
Well, it's three people plus an increase in one.
Right, but what I'm asking for is, what's the head count now? What's the head count that's being requested?
Well, the head count may not change, it may be hours, but no more heads.
But FTE then?
Yeah.
So that we know specifically what we're, what we're looking at, and that's, that's the, you know, it's comparison of dollars, it's comparison of people, it's comparison of how many people are, are little crimes.
Also, some of this stuff's reallocated.
That's, you know, that's valuable, Mark, but I think when, you know, if we're gonna be talking to voters, and we say, hey, your taxes are gonna go up by twelve dollars if we get a recreation director, you know, I mean, you gotta be able to, I mean, there are FTEs and there are percentages, but to Barry's point, the story is what's important. Um, I mean, you know, for Jean to be able to expand her opportunity to give more services, that's, that's an important story, I think.
Completely agree, I just think that it's also a fair way to, to have a comparison. We started at the beginning of the meeting with a discussion of FTEs and how we're looking at them. Let's just look at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, to, to, to Mark's point, I think it'd be much easier for me and, and people in town to look at our sal- salary schedule and understand it in terms of FTEs, because right now, we don't know, uh, whether that's one-and-a-half people, two-and-a-half people, um, and in some cases, if it's an individual getting a three percent raise or is it an individual going from twenty-five to, I don't know the exact math, but twenty-seven and a half hours. That, that's an important thing to, to know, because, um, and to go back in previous years and show that we've lost FTEs, um, you know, people hours, boots on the ground, whatever you wanna call it, I think the town is gonna wanna see that, you know, where we've lost, um, worker hours and where we want to get them back.
Bob? I agree with all those comments, um, the way I interpreted the comments from the community was, that's part two. Part one is what we're doing tonight to show you what we should be doing for the community, and then to back it up with lots of data. And painful as it may be, um, you will see the town manager wield his axe and list every single thing that's not funded that is listed here, and I will do my best to put them in a prioritized order, from the hardest thing to cut to the easiest thing to cut, and that's not easy, um, so that you can see specifically exactly how much each thing costs and exactly what it would cost in an overall. So I will do that, that seemed to distract from the message that we're presenting tonight, though.
That would be very helpful.
I agree with you, that's an important part.
But the story, it was important for folks to hear.
Yeah. Is that the same format, John was talking a few minutes ago about potentially just highlighting those three-plus, a few hours, is that your thought, Bob, it would be those same three priced out and?
Yeah, we've looked at it last winter, um, for a potential override in the fall previously, listing every position and listing what it would cost, including benefits-
Right.
-and what it would cost the taxpayer, so, yeah.
I think it's easier for people to make a decision when they see-
Yeah, absolutely.
What am I getting for the dollars you're asking me to spend?
No question.
And I, and I think anything that we, anything that we do as a Board of Selectment in the way of putting forward an override ought to detail that very specifically.
Yep.
Because when it's an amorphous number, people have a very hard time embracing it. When it's, when it's itemized as to what you're gonna get, and tonight, we're happening to be talking about public services, another night, we're gonna be talking about public safety, another night, we're gonna be talking about, you know, DPW and facilities management. I just think people are very interested in what they're getting for what they're paying, and what we're asking them to think about spending and what they will get in return for that, that currently is not present. All of those things you mentioned, Jean, you know, those purple boxes are, you know, they're absent, and they have, in some cases, they've been absent a long time, other cases, they, they aren't there and should be there, so.
Are they coming?
Barry and Mark's comment, I think that FTE information is helpful because it does help quantify what these numbers are, sometimes it's challenging. When can we expect those, that data?
Um, for town meeting, we're giving it a good shot. Let me describe some of the challenges, it would seem to be simple, when I know their names, I can count them. Um, we share an assessor with Wakefield, we pay him as an expense, not a wage. If we had an FTE system, a annual system, we would miss him. We have a shared Regional Housing Services Officer with four communities, it would count that as a full person, it's really a quarter per person. So there's no technology that does all this, it's manual labor. Um, and, you know, especially because of things that are part-time and things that are considered, done as a non-wage, it's, it's challenging, and we want to be accurate. You know, every year until the last two, we've presented FTEs, and honestly, no one seemed to care. Um, you know, every year, there's a list of FTEs that change from the prior year.
The only thing they cared about was the difference, right? Oh, you, the only thing they cared about, oh, this went up, or that went down.
I guess.
It was more the delta than the number.
And what I remember historically is the town was plus or minus a few positions over a long period, two-hundred-and-ten, you know, it, the, the things changed, but I certainly understand the point, that it's an important thing, but I also don't want to distract from the message of what it would take to deliver the service that the town seems to need, uh, by getting lost in the minutia of FTEs or any other math. That, that follows absolutely now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to distract from, from that, that either, but for me to, to, to really understand this and get it in perspective and understand how things have gone historically and the positions we've lost, um, I think FTEs are an important aspect of that. I understand that you can't do that for all the positions because it just doesn't fit.
Yeah, I've had lots of discussions with Dr. Doherty, and it's just as challenging for them, at least as much, because they have so many part-time.
Right.
Just difficult.
But I mean, Jean, Jean went through a number of these positions and, and knows the people and knows how many hours they work.
Right.
So I think to the extent that, that can be included would be very helpful for me.
It might, it might be easier just to look at the incremental spend and the incremental hours rather than the full McGill, is that an easier way to do it?
It's, it's relatively simple to compare the current year to next year.
Right.
But people have expressed interest in five and ten years worth of history, that's much harder.
Yeah.
Unless we go to the town meeting booklet, take the number and use it, which you have done.
Right, right.
Uh, it's, it's not difficult, and again, you know, a full budget, town manager's balance budget is produced for the FinCom, it will have lots of data, lots of examples, lots more than you're seeing tonight. It won't have all those charts necessarily, or the stories that Jean told, but it'll have more numerical information such as FTEs. Um, you know, FTE should be able to be put into the FinCom budget, certainly have not in the town meeting budget, okay? But I, I understand the, the helpfulness that that number presents and others.
Jean, do you have an electronic version of, of your presentation that you can send out to us? That'd be great.
Sure.
Yeah, we can put all this up on the website afterwards, or anytime. It's helpful. But I said-
We're hearing Barry's comments as far as telling the story, I think one of the things that would be helpful when we can talk about is having a high-level photo review of a handful of books describes Jean's more detailed presentation, so that, for example, the Billings Inspector is a really nice one, where we can say, by adding this position, this is how it benefits residents, and therefore it's justifying the expense, and that, I think that's where the FTEs can be combined with this story concept, and it lets people know what they're getting for gas.
Any other questions, going to go back? Okay. Okay, if that, we'll switch over to Matt, or I think is next, with the Administrator Services. A little bit of logic. That's great. Um, Ben requested to take a two-minute break here.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any?
Just so you're aware.
Including review of union contracts and also trying to get up with employee self-service. Meaning employees can go on the computer and look up their own payroll information, which a lot of places already do that and we're about to, I hope, roll it out soon here in running. And then the last division is the technology division and that's pretty much what you think it is. It provides centralized computer and telecommunications services as well as internet, audiovisual software, computer support, mapping, and again, we provide support to the entire organization. The org chart that I'm showing you is actually done in 2016 and hasn't changed at all. I am going to recommend some changes tonight, but I didn't want to sort of jump over and put them in the org chart already, but that's where we stand right now in terms of my department. So I think the easiest thing is, there's only about three new situations that I want to talk about. So I'd go right to the munis sheet so we can see the numbers and, you know, if we can start up in the operations division as it comes. There we go. And there's, in the salary line, I'm actually, we're asking for an additional clerk for the town clerk's office. And it's a little confusing because we're asking for the clerk's office, but it comes under operations. What's happening there is that operations is the central area for a lot of the generic clerk, admin staff. So the theory there was that they could be moved from department, division to division if needed without being tied to one division. But the need really comes from the town clerk's office and so we're asking for an additional clerk. The town clerk's office is a very busy place. I know, I see a lot of you stop by there on a regular basis. It's become busier. One of the reasons is the new public records law and Laura is the head person for the public records law. She deals with most of the public records requests and now, under the new guidelines, has to track every request that comes in through every one of our departments. So the tracking, between the tracking, fulfilling, I get involved at the higher level, attorneys involved at the higher level. It's put even more of a strain on her office. She's been asking though, even before the public records law went into effect, for another clerk for a number of years, partly because we have, it looks like we have a lot of people there, but a lot of people are job sharing and she has a lot of work to do in terms of preserving public documents, digital storage, scanning, lower level things that I would rather her not be doing, her time is more valuable somewhere else, but would need that clerk's position in order to do her job. So she, that was her first and her only ask for the last three years and I told her I would bring it forward to you and get some thoughts.
So that's a second full-time position administrative clerk?
Right, in the clerk's office. And again, it's not a clerk, like Laura's a clerk, it's a clerk, it's a lower level, it's an administrative clerk. The next position, I mean, there's nothing really, I'm asking for the town manager's office, it's pretty much staying the same. If you go to the HR department, I'm just getting to my notes, HR department is another position that I'm asking for in that department and that would be for a second HR generalist. So if you go to that line item there, you'll see there's a great increase of the percentage is 96.2 percent. So we could have another generalist there. And the need there is, like I mentioned before, we do have an HR generalist and he's fairly new, but he shares, we share that position with the school department. So he's pretty much here two days, two days a week and at the school department, two days a week. And we have a good working relationship with the school department. If we need him on a special project, we can have him for a few more hours, vice versa. At the beginning of the school year, signing teachers up for different things, you know, he's over there a little bit more.
Matt, how is that allocated? Is it allocated between the two budgets or is it in the?
No, no, we pay for the whole amount.
Okay, so.
Yep. We pay for the whole amount and we share it with the schools, so.
But just to be fair, it was put in, if you will, as an accommodated cost, so that we prorated it.
So it really doesn't appear in this budget?
It appears in this budget, but it was funded, if you will, first, one year when we both read, I think we added it during maybe a November town meeting, so it was added, if you will, from the general fund, not from the existing.
So is that person, the one you have listed here is a generalist at a salary level? That's a new, that's a new add?
A second one.
A second one, yeah.
So is it?
The line item is for two generalists, but we'll actually, one, yeah, two generalists.
So I guess what I'm saying is that the first one currently resides in the town budget, even though you have them, you only have them two days a week?
That's correct.
I do allocate some of the cost of that position to the school, not on, not in our financials, but for the end of year report so that they can show the costs.
Well, I think you're not giving yourself credit. I think you need to do that. I mean, that seems like, I mean, I would never question your accounting skills, but just from a common sense standpoint, it strikes me that, I mean, when we start to look at, you know, where money's being spent and how it's being spent, I think it should be allocated where it's being used. Doesn't that make sense?
Actually, there's a big problem with that potentially. To have a single person paid for by a school department out of town takes a lot of legal hurdles and this avoids that. So it's not to say it can't be done, but I have an email, town council explains all the process we'd have to go through for a single person to work on two different.
I just love government.
Exactly.
You know.
It's all mass D O R.
But, you know, it's interesting that we can, you know, in the last presentation, we can hire a person and divide them by four and that's not a problem.
That's without the town, so that's easier.
Is the problem compensating them or the problem using them in that role?
The problem is, because of ed reform, the school budget is sacrosanct and to have anything coming and going, if you will, between the school and the town is very uncommon. You remember in the past, some of you will remember, you had to vote on, is it called a special employee?
Yeah.
Hal Croft at one point was. This is the area you'll get into if you try to split a person's salary into the two areas. This practically solves the problem. He's in two places, the money's in one place.
Is it any easier if it's an accommodated cost?
No. It's all legal.
It's all legal.
What was, can you remind us what the purpose of putting, having the dual function as opposed to having HR, they have an HR person, we have an HR person? Was it, was it an accounting thing? Was it a reporting thing? Why did we, why did we do it that way?
It was a support system.
We both had a need and so, you know, I think that, and we always want to try to do synergies with the school department if we could, so we decided to have one position. That position would be shared and it was budgeted at the time under the town budget. It could have been very easily budgeted under the school budget, I guess, but they decided to put it under the town budget and that's where it stands.
Is there any way to allocate some of the expense back into any other part of the budget?
I don't think it matters. I think it's sort of, sort of the one reading thing. You know, if we had to pay for it as a town only and find the resources to do that, it would have been difficult. It came in off, you know, off the top, off the red advice.
But it's no longer paid that way?
No, it is. Well, that's how it got in there, that's all that matters. So it became a baseline number for the town to then use in the future.
So would this second position be also shared or would this be just for us?
I know that the HR director would like it just for us. And what I was going to say too about the need for that position is that that department, that division has been really swamped these days as well. Increased hiring, more paperwork, more state and federal compliance work, more training requirements, more training in general. And we're finding too, that it's getting harder and harder to hire people. Sometimes we have to go through the hiring process two or three times for the same job because we've had people go through the process and in the end say, hey, I want more money or I want something different. We can't be very flexible when it comes to that. So they may pull out and we have to start the process over again.
Yep.
And with everything, you know, in terms of training is a big, big part of what we need to do there as well with everything going on nationally, we need more training. So that's something that she's asked for, that I agree that we should have. And again, we serve the entire operation under this division. So retirees, light department, you know, we all, pieces of it go everywhere.
So Matt, and I'm sure you and Judy have talked about this at length.
Right.
Do we need, so let's jump for a second and say we need another person. Do we really need a person and a half? Could we release a person to the school department and add a person or keep a person and suggest that they make a hire?
Well, we could, I mean.
Or is it that we need one and a half? If we need one and a half, that's a different story.
I think she'll say that we need one and a half.
Okay.
You know, obviously she'll take what we can get, but I think she really feels that we need that, you know, the one person we can share with the school department and one person just to help us out on a daily basis up there in HR.
And I know from speaking to the superintendent, you know, he would also love Sean full-time. We would love Sean full-time.
He's a great employee. Right, we do.
So ideally, we'd each have one, I guess, and maybe more. As Matt said, HR's becoming incredibly complex. And just to reemphasize that point, and I'm not sure if this was Barry's intended question, the light department and the schools each have their own HR director that do only school and light department things. Town HR director does town plus other things for all employees of the schools and the light department, so it's a little different.
I got it. What else do you have, Matt?
So moving on from HR, I can move down to technology, the other, the other big change in the budget. And if we go to the technology budget, you'll see that there's a new position added called software training coordinator. And again, we say it's a new position, but it's something I've asked for every year since I've been here and it's been in Bob's lookaheads for a long time. And that's to have somebody that's centralized and that could actually train people and handle software issues. Currently, we divide those responsibilities up among not only technology staff, but administrative staff, administrative assistants. And a lot of people aren't that specialized in software issues. There's a lot of redundancy. I find that some people in one department are working on the same issue as somebody in another department. Surveys, you know, we have, I found out we had several survey monkey accounts for the town, we really only needed one. So, you know, things like that. If we had that, we don't have that position and that's sort of hindered our ability to launch and support a better web presence, to do things like online building permits. We talked about even having online parking stickers for the depot, dot licenses, you know, we could do a lot with that sort of software. Plus, we have a lot of software. I think you heard that in Gene's presentation as well, when we have the munis software, view permit. So having that one centralized software coordinator would really, I think, pay dividends to the town and would help out not only the technology department, but take a burden off some of the other administrative staff in other departments that currently deal with it. And like I said, it's something I've been asking for, for a few years, has not been funded and at the advice of the technology director, I'm asking for it again.
So is that, does the school department have such a person or are we, are we again shared?
Well, I don't think there's any, there would be any plans to share this. I'm not sure what the school department has for that type of.
Probably different software, it's more educational.
Right, they may have more educational.
I think, Matt, this is a small point, but over on the percent change column, this happened a couple of times, it says a zero percent change.
Can't be skewed.
We should probably have someone like N A or, because I, you know, I can just see someone from the town looking at that and saying, that's not a zero percent change.
We can't override the accounting system.
That's an accounting.
This isn't something we do, this is something software.
Oh, yeah. I think.
No, no, I get that.
It should say a hundred percent.
I understand that.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can clear that up when we do the, when we do the actual budget, we put it in a different form.
We put it in Excel.
That's what FinCom will see and we could do that then, but in terms of the accounting software, which is munis, this is the way it comes out.
Okay. What else do you have, Matt?
You know, there's other, there's a few other things in technology, cost and expenses that have gone up and down and pretty much nets out, so I didn't really want to spend too much time there. And I just wanted to go back to the town clerk's budget and I already talked about an extra clerk for her. You'll notice there's some increases in the elections portion of the budget and that's because there's actually more elections this year. So it looks like a big expense, but we have to deal with the elections that are out there.
And that comes and goes every year.
And that comes and.
Is there any offset that came back to us on that early?
Yeah, we requested, we requested it, I think it was a little over $8,000 for the early voting, $8,233.74 is what we sent to the state auditor's office. That's what Laura assessed our expense for the early voting to be.
Yeah, what did we get?
Well, that was only sent at the end of November, so I don't think we've gotten it back.
So does that reflect early voting in our expenses because there's going to be more voting going on?
Yeah, well, there will be early voting in the.
November?
November election, yeah.
Not in town elections. That doesn't apply.
No, no, and I think it's just, it's not the state primary either, I think it's just the state general election. So that'll happen in November. So that's really, you know, just a really high overview of what's changing in the budget. I didn't want to spend too long on the minutia, but if you do have any other questions on any certain line items, I'm happy to answer the questions. If you think of something later, please give me a call or send me an email. I'm happy to discuss it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Exstrom. I'm the town accountant and finance director and I thought I'd take a different approach this year and give you a little bit of an overview of what makes up the finance department and what we do there before I get into the numbers. This is a visual that shows you all the pieces that make up the finance department. We have general finance, which is collector's office and the treasury function. There's 6.26 FTEs in that division and that includes a treasurer, an assistant treasurer, a collector, assistant collector, and then 2.26 clerks. And that 2.26 sounds like a weird number, but we do have, as Matt had mentioned, a shared employee that works in the collector's office and does one day for the town clerk's office, so she's .74, or .76. The assessing, and we also have one person that works in the collector's office who shares time into the assessing office, so 50% in each office to help on both offices. The assessing office does not include our shared regional assessor. He's a wait filled employee. I only included our actual paid employees on our payroll, but he is part of our team. I thought he should be included, but the assessing is made up of, it's 2.5 FTEs, it's made up of an assistant assessor, one administrative assistant and a halftime clerk. And in accounting, we have me, a .6 senior administrative assistant, she works 22 and a half hours, and one administrative assistant that works full-time. I should mention that general finance and accounting are shared services. I mean, we are really doing work for all of the organization. We're doing for R M L D, we're doing for all the enterprise funds. We are processing their payroll, we are processing their cash receipts, we are wiring their money, we're doing their cash reconciliation, we're doing all of it. So in total, we have 11.36 FTEs and I just want to get into kind of the volume that we see in this department because it is quite, quite large. So this is general finance and this is just in no way an all-inclusive list, but some of the key things that we do in general finance. We do payroll bi-weekly and we pay about 13, 12 to 1,300 people bi-weekly.
That includes the schools as well?
Mm-hmm, and R M L D. And actually, even the retirement board employees are paid through our payroll and may reimburse. We do cash management and reconciliation for all of those organizations as well. So that would mean wiring money, it would be all the reconciliation of all the cash. So that's no small task, I can assure you of that because since we lost our treasurer, I've been heavily involved and it is, it's a monster.
How many wires do you send out a week?
Well, it depends on the R M L D volume because we do process our wires though, so it fluctuates a lot. But I would say, I would say on a daily basis, we would process around 12, 13 wires. And there's weeks depending on the R M L D volume that will go to like 40, 50 wires a week. It all depends on the volume that they have.
And there's also a very small turnaround. With one of their vendors that they purchase power, we have to pay within a few days receiving the invoice or they start charging us huge fees. So it's a pretty important function as well, we have to be on it. State and federal reporting, all that quarterly 941s as well as the year-end reporting of the W2s, the 1099s, the 1099 Rs and the 1095 Cs, all being done out of this department. Debt issuance, doesn't happen as often, but it's quite an endeavor to get debt issued and you will be seeing something later that you'll need to be signing off on. Quarterly property tax billing. We have over 9,000 properties and we are billing every quarter for those properties. We have utility billing for those properties and we are billing every quarter. And then we manage tax title accounts. When people fall in arrears, we work payment plans out to try to avoid a foreclosure situation. And then we process all the payments. And it's, last year, there was 125,000 payments processed through the collector's office. So when you look at the numbers, you start to say, wow, that's not a big staff for what we actually have to do and that isn't everything, that's just kind of the bigger things. For assessing, there's the valuation of all the property. They do field review where they go out to the properties and get updated information, data collection, and then they enter all that into their property database. They administer all the statutory and local exemptions. They bill all the motor vehicle. Currently, we have about 25,000 motor vehicle excise tax bills that go out. And then they also do all the abatements from our vehicle and property tax. They maintain all of our property records and they do the class, the tax classification presentation to you every year and for the general public. And this past year, we adopted the new senior tax relief program, which was advertised through the assessing department and administered from the assessing department and no staff was added to do it. So that was great. In accounting, we process all the invoices and send out all the payments. And last year, there was 34,000 payments and as I mentioned, I had 1.6 FTEs to do that. Incidentally, Bob and I get the pleasure of reviewing those 34,000 bills as well and signing off on the warrants. And also too, the 125,000 cash receipts, I get to review all those too for extra fun. So the monthly budget reporting to the department heads, the senior administrative assistant on a monthly basis will send out a year-to-date budget report, which shows them the year-to-date budget to actuals so they can get a feel for where they stand and I also review those to see if there's any cause for concern, just high level. I'd wish to dig deeper, but we're kind of lean and it's hard because there's a lot going on all the time. Budget oversight and support, so that's what I would be doing when I'm reviewing all those budget reports or even just generally spot checking some things that look strange to me. I would be sending questions to department heads, kind of highlighting to them, I'm seeing this and this looks strange, let's figure this out. And I also provide support as much as I can in building their budgets because, you know, police and fire and all them, you know, fire has never asked me, but police, when we changed the department head, the spreadsheet that was in existence had a lot of pretty high-level Excel formulas and assistance was needed to kind of bring that spreadsheet forward and understand all that was going on there. I also provide support in terms of grants, managing grants. A lot of times, a police officer is assigned a grant that they have to manage that's public safety related, so they have to do it. But they don't know a lot about munis and they don't know what they should be looking at, so I provide that support. And thankfully, we have Andrew, who's two over from me on my right. He was just hired in July. He's my assistant finance director, he's also the treasurer. When we hired him, we took the collector piece away, which frees up a little bit more time for him to help more with that budget piece because I feel like I'm very, I'm spread very thin. The other things that we're doing is munis support. Because our group has a lot of munis experience, we tend to be the go-to place for questions. When things are going wrong, people call my group first and usually they get their answers or help from the admins working in the office. But if they, if that can't solve the problem, sometimes it's a security setting issue. I set all the security of what anybody can see in munis and so sometimes I do have to get involved. Sometimes I'm making calls to munis and I'm playing phone tag with them for days to fix issues, but that's going on in my department. The tax recap is done by me and it's done to set the tax rate so that we can send the tax bills. So it's not completely by me, I do the financial end and the assessor does the assessing piece and the two pieces together come out to be our tax rate. We are certified currently for the current year and we are working hard to get those bills out. Free cash calculation, we have to do this every year and we usually use free cash at our November town meeting. We cannot use free cash until it is certified and we can't calculate it until we've closed our year and so it's, it's always a race to get this done. This year, we didn't need it for town meeting, but usually we do. But it is one of those, like the first step after getting closed is this free cash calculation because we don't know what we're going to need. Schedule A reporting is a report to the D O R that's required of us and if I don't get it in in time, they can stop our state aid, so it's pretty important. Financial analysis and reporting largely done by me and it should be more in-depth than what I'm feeling like I'm getting done lately, but it's definitely high level and then when I have more time, I dig. So that's being done only by me really. And then compile audit requests. My accounting department pretty much does the majority of what's requested from the So I figured I would just give you a high-level shot of what our budget looks like by division, accounting, assessing and general finance. And quickly, you're going to, and it's just compared to our revised budget for fiscal 18 and it's just the proposed budget that you see here tonight. And you can clearly see that the change that's happening is in the accounting department. I'll get to that on the next slide because it's clearly a much larger percentage than what you're used to seeing. This is just the salary piece of our budget, broken down by division. And the reason that that accounting piece is so high is that I've requested an assistant town accountant. Back when I started, I was just the town accountant and I was in charge of three people. And so I was able to do everything I needed to do to the fullest extent without any issue. And then when we had the reorganization and the whole finance department minus some pieces that got moved to administrative services became mine, I noticed that there was definitely some strain because managing all those people comes with a lot of time. You know, when things come up, they're coming to the person and it used to be Bob and now it's me. And so that, there's a lot of time being spent managing that staff, guiding that staff. And then also, the budget piece seemed to emerge when I became finance director. It seems of a logical nature, if you need help with your budget, to ask the finance director for that assistance. So I started to do more one-on-one time with the department heads, helping them with budgets. And so I spread myself pretty thin and I spent a lot of time at the office and it's very difficult to find the work-life balance. But I want to be able to do everything to the best of my ability and I feel like the assistance would be greatly appreciated. I am not under the illusion that I will get it, but I ask just to put it out there as a, as a something that would be helpful to make things better because the financial analysis that we could do if we had another person would be great. We're just so lean. The other thing that concerns me is those financial reporting things that I mentioned, free cash, tax rate setting and Schedule A, I'm the only one who knows how to do them in my department.
Two or four.
We are too lean for me to pull somebody for several days and show them beginning to end how to do those processes. They're not difficult, but they're time-consuming and I can't carve out enough time to give somebody that whole exposure that they would need. And so that's a vulnerability that I, if I'm, if something were to happen to me during that crucial time, that would be a bad thing to have happen. The one thing that we do have working in our favor is that the former town accountant is still on our payroll, working part-time as that operations specialist. And I would hope that if something awful were to happen to me and we needed that done, that she would help us. But that's part of the reason I ask. I feel like that's a vulnerability that shouldn't be there. I should be able to have a backup. I do feel that most communities, most of our peer communities do have an assistant town accountant and many of them don't held the finance director role.
How many things other, like that, Sharon? Are there, are there other vulnerabilities in here like that?
I feel like a lot of the other things are cross-trained, so.
Already?
Yeah.
Okay.
But what I do find is that because we're so lean and they're busy times for each, like the collector's office is busy at certain times, if I have somebody on a vacation, what we do has to be done every week. So I find myself processing invoices, you know, doing that piece because they're detail checking all of those invoice batches and they're cutting all those checks and they're making sure that everything is correct, that there is no tax added to the bill because we're a tax exempt, that they've used the correct address, that it's the right vendor, all that to avoid us paying the wrong party. There's a lot of volume going on and it's done every week and it can't wait.
So here you're.
And so I'm filling those slots.
The inefficiency of your time is.
The opportunity cost.
The order of magnitude of that is so odd.
We have people that know to do it, but it depends on. We have people that know to do it, but it depends on the timing of it. And then when we lost the treasurer in March, when she had left, I was trying to fill that role for the four months it took for us to fill it. So we fall behind, and it just feels like you're playing--
You can't catch up.
Yeah, playing a catch-up game, it's very difficult to catch up. What I'm happy about is Andrew is catching on great, and we are doing fantastic work. We also have the prior treasurer coming in, helping us to understand all that she did, because it was a lot, a lot to digest and help us get caught up, because otherwise, I don't think we'd ever see the light of day. We'd fall, we'd fall months behind, yeah.
So in short, you're just looking, you're looking for a single person, 46.5 plus normal increases for the rest of the department?
Yeah. So the budget is built person by person. So with what Bob had recommended was a 2% step and a 1% cola to put in this proposed Level 1 budget. If somebody's at top step and they're not getting a step, we just budget the cola. So we don't just automatically assume, oh, we'll take this line and increase it 3%, we build it bottom up. And so that is an actual figure. I guessed on what I might have to pay to get another body in, knowing full well I probably won't get it. But we have a Plan B, because I feel like the change that we made in making the assistant finance director a treasurer assistant finance director as opposed to a treasurer-collector assistant finance director is I think that maybe there might be enough free time for me to cross-train Andrew to do some of that reporting. So we'll see what the year brings. I'm not under the illusion that getting public safety, you know, is, you know, I think public safety is more important than adding this position. I'm not in the illusion, but I want to highlight to you that it would be helpful, this department, to function better. So that's the only reason I ask.
That's exactly why we're here today. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks. And then under the expenses, there's very little to tell. The 3.4% that you see there is our regional assessor. We have to allot for increases year-over-year. We don't know exactly what that contract's going to look like, and so we're being a little conservative there.
But he's an expense, not a--
He's an expense, which is why he shows up here, because he's their employee, not ours.
Having him an expense is much less expensive--
Oh, yeah, there's definitely cost savings there, yeah. So, but I had to show some level of increase, not knowing what his pay increase is going to look like for next year. We haven't negotiated that yet. And then the only little thing that's up in general finance, everything else was flat. We didn't increase anything else. We increased general finance by $500 for printing forms. That's the line item we use to print the tax bills. And every year, we're just $200 under actual. So increasing it seemed prudent, since we were coming in so close to budget. So that's the only other thing that's increased. This is just summarized, but when you look in your packet, you can see the line by line. If you have questions, I certainly am happy to answer them, but I highlighted what I thought you'd want to know. Do you have any questions, Warren?
Very well, Ron.
Great job, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Nice and crisp. Okay, I think that brings us up to--
That's the final portion, that's the end of the budget. Any questions? Any questions from the board before we move on to the last topic of the evening? Any questions from the public?
Do you want to take two minutes?
No, we take two minutes to let those folks get their circulation going.
Sent general obligation bond anticipation note, known as the note of the town, dated December 15, 2017, and payable August 17, 2018, to Eastern Bank at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $6,520.04. Move further that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 30, 2017, and a final official statement dated December 7, 2017. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Move further that the town treasurer and the board's selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver significant events, disclosure, undertaking, in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212. In such form as may be approved by bound counsel of the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Move further that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bound counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update--
Mr. Hall, I moved you to--
She said I had to read it all.
You don't have--
You don't have to, apparently, Bob.
Okay.
You do that for entertainment purposes, it's only--
As long as you guys--
I was almost done.
You don't have any problems.
That's why we waited.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, we've done this before. You need tons of signatures.
And we need a blue pen--
We need it, but now we need--
You need a black pen or a blue?
We need a, we need a move on this.
Yeah, that's the motion, and--
That's a motion that's seconded.
I have a black one, I have a--
You need to call for a vote.
Okay, is this a roll call vote?
No.
Okay.
Did you get a second?
I, yes, second.
John seconds. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? 5-0.
Okay.
And the only other topic tonight is the minutes. I have a couple of questions. The minutes from November 14th, which are in your packet tonight.
Yes. Move to approve those minutes as amended.
Is there any--
Okay. Am I going here? Okay, is a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
14.
Second.
Okay, Dan, John seconds. Any further discussion or amendments to the motion, to the minutes?
Were there amendments or not?
Yeah, there are. They're in the packet from Thursday.
That's in case there are any.
The minutes from November 14th.
All right.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as drafted? Barrett, you win. 5-0. Okay, good. Before we close, Bob, there's a number of question, number of emails, including some tonight on my phone, about the second parking sticker. You know, the one in our packet tonight from December 6, I'm writing to--
Another one came today.
Right. Are we responding to each of those? Or I should say, are you responding to each of those? Do we need to do something? It could be as simple as I acknowledge I got it, and here's the facts.
I'll have to go back case by case. Yes, we are acknowledging them and responding. I can't say that's true in the last four days necessarily.
Yeah, because one came today.
I don't even see that.
Sure you didn't get a chance to even look at it.
Just so you folks know, if you get them individually, obviously, I don't see them. If they go to the--
This was at all points.
If this goes to the selectmen, I'll see it.
No, it wasn't all points.
If you do individually, I may not see it.
We're doing with black. We're doing black?
Yeah. John, also on that point, just to say it publicly, there were some questions about residents that live in certain areas--
Yes.
--and what their rights and restrictions might be. And the answer is, we're doing the same as the past practice has always been, for better or worse. So that if someone received a free sticker to park in front of their house, and they live near the depot, they will continue to get a free sticker to park in front of their house and live--
We moved on Wenda Street that--
Yeah, that makes sense.
Was that to her on that? Yes, we did. The chief's con, but what the chief will tell you at some future date is, we've done some recent research into how this was all in the past, and let's just say it needs a little bit more structure. And, you know, the board will have a call on what to make in the future, anything from you should buy a $25 sticker in order to park in front of your house to a $150 sticker so you can continue to have one for free. But I will tell you that it's, it's a fair amount of people that are impacted by this. You remember the discussion about the tennis courts, the bankrupt tennis courts? And there's a few houses on there, and, you know, they were getting free stickers. What would, what should that free sticker allow them to do?
That doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, we used to have one sticker that did everything in town. You could practically go to the dry cleaners with it. Now that there's different functions--
How many people are we talking about?
Probably a couple hundred.
Because they're parking out in front of their house. Let's get a different colored sticker for them.
I was going to say, you almost need a third sticker that just says you can park in front of your house.
Well, right, right.
Enable the--
Need a motion?
Nope, nope.
Yeah, that's what you need to do.
So we'll handle it this year the same way it's been done.
From the standpoint of, I mean, when you think about the cost effect, you know, the cost effect, it's much cheaper to go buy 300 stickers than to give out, you know, 300, $150 stickers that don't apply to the situation.
Yeah, and just think about this. My answer to the chief was, I personally don't care. Let's say there's 200 houses in town that have this third sticker. I personally don't care if they park in each other's driveways, front yards. I don't think they need to be addressed specifically. So if the people that live near the depot want to go park in front of the tennis courts--
Let them do it.
Let them do it.
Long walk home.
We can't over-regulate it.
We're not going to put like different neighborhoods.
No, we don't have stamping to enforce it, so--
No, but all those that are of that nature--
I left anything out.
Pick it a different color.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, we're still signing notes. Barrett, if you'd mind checking that all, you go through it, that all the other signatures are present. Sometimes one gets missed.
We can adjourn, can't we?
Yeah, we can. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? 5-0 at--
I adjourned.
10-06.